Okay, so number four is discussion topics. Just a reminder, public comment will be accepted after the conclusion of each discussion item. Comments are limited to current agenda items. Anyone having a legitimate interest in an agenda item may participate. Attendees must register their intention to speak upon their arrival at the meeting. Participants will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if and when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes unless excited by the board president. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Comments are to be directed to the board. No person may address or question board members individually. And the board respectfully asks that comments remain focused on issues but not on specific personnel, as personnel is handled through other avenues. So topic one is facilities and referendum planning with Bray.
All right. Dive right in? Sounds great. Well, first, thank you for inviting us back again tonight. The last time we were in front of you, I think we had a really good discussion, went through all of the different items that we were considering to be placed within the budget for the referendum question. Had some discussion about a couple items, and we had taken some action items to do some more research and come back to the group with, so I think we're here tonight to present that. First, what I'll do is walk you through the updated budget spreadsheet. Okay? So this looks similar in structure to the last one, but what we've done is gone through and taken out all of the projects to date that we're planning not to include within the actual referendum question. Okay? And that's important for us because when we have been talking about these budgets, we've discussed them as project cost, right? Total project, not just construction costs, but any of the dollars associated with soft costs for those project, contingencies, plan approvals, architectural fees, you know, construction management fees, things like that. So when we, the prior budget you looked at, since all those other items were still open for discussion, each of those held a proportionate share of those soft costs. Okay? So it's important for us, as we start to hone in on an actual project, that we zero those out and modify those costs. Okay? So an example would be at Edgerton, when we had the addition for the gym proposed. That had dollars in to do a site survey, to do geotechnical analysis. Okay? Just says two examples. Since we're not planning to propose an addition onto that building, we don't need to have those soft costs. Okay? And so we've, we've not only taken out the construction costs, we've taken out that portion of the soft costs as well. Okay? So some of those were fixed dollar amounts as projections. Other ones were percentages, so like the architectural fee or the contingencies are percentages, so those go up and down proportionate to whatever the project is. And so ultimately, what you'll see is a number at the very bottom of this spreadsheet that shows a total of $16.1 million, $15,158,300. Okay? And that is a, about a $240,000 increase from where we were in the last meeting, but note that the majority of that is made up with the ADA compliance updates at the middle school and the high school. Okay? Where we added those back into the scope. So that makes up the majority of the difference. And then some of the other dollar amounts are up just because of the soft costs impact on the smaller projects. Okay? And so really, as you go through, from a scope standpoint, just for, I guess, confirmation or just kind of a refresher, at Edgerton, we're showing the fire alarm as well as the ADA compliance at the restroom and the doorways. That total is $596,000. At HCE, we right now are proposing the scaled back version, and this is shown at $9.9 million. Okay? Up slightly from where we were in the last concept. I think Jonathan, if you remember, in the last meeting, there was a specific request for us to take a look at, could we master plan to allow for the gym, or the cafeteria to be added in the future? And we went ahead and went through the design concept and are proposing some slight modifications that allow us the ability to very easily, you can see this dash line here, add on that cafeteria as shown in the future. Okay? And so what this ended up doing was actually slightly reducing the new construction square footage, but we moved some of that scope into renovation. Okay? So right now, you'll see a little bit less yellow in kind of this L shape, but you'll now see this red area here, shown as renovation. So in order to get that, that total scope to match, we reduced the new construction cost slightly, but we added a bit in for the renovation, and that's what makes up that slight difference in the cost you see there. But this would allow us the ability in the future to add the cafeteria, just as shown in that prior concept. And our initial thought is that this room here would actually serve as the kitchen really well. Okay? So right now, that would be storage, but in the future, we would target that potentially as a renovation for relocation.
So Lori, Lori had to leave. She was ill, so she and I talked a little bit from the last time, as we went through and fine tuned the design, and then prior to us meeting with, having a call last Thursday, one of the things that sort of came up in our discussion was that bottom right corner that's in Mav right now, that's a special education. So she was thinking, like, right now, it's old shower rooms right now, if you've been in there, and one of the rooms has custodial storage, some old ceiling tiles. The other has some fire storage, some OTPT, some stuff that's along there. And she said, probably, it's not a very good use of space, but it's old showers that have been just blocked off, and there's not a lot you can do with it. It's old pink tile or whatever. So in our talking about where would the other music room go and some other things, because the current, if you remember our tour last time, the music room or the orchestra instruments, that's going to be storage now for building a grounds, because they can go on that third floor. We're trying to keep students out of that bottom level. So if they take some of that storage, and we looked at the cost of just renovating that whole, which would be a much better use of that space, because it's not very usable in terms of that. It's got outside windows, it looks to the east there. So in, right now, it's a special education. Obviously, they're just placeholders. She'd even talked about potentially if music were there, because of the sound that creates by the music rooms, by the, by the gym in terms of all that. So very, she was very pleased with this, because it allows us to renovate a space that what, right now, isn't very usable in terms of classroom space. So I just wanted to point that out, because that was not on the last time, but that sort of came up after the last conversation, where we were making sure that all the spaces that were being either demoed or relocated, that we had an equal space for, for those pieces.
So that's, where that part that you were just talking about in Mav, that's labeled special education as a placeholder, that's not, there may be part of that that's unused showers, but there's also a boys bathroom and a girls bathroom there that are in use.
Yep.
So there is part of that space right now that is in use, that provides necessary bathroom space, I believe, for the, whatever's going on in the gym at the time.
So we talked about that in terms of the renovation. Again, it's just a big blob right now, but we also then, in terms of what that is, would make that ADA compliant, because that might be where people who come in for concerts in the gym right now, our public uses that, also in terms of that. So, yep, John, we're aware of that when we talked with Lori about that, in terms of that can make those.
Well, my only thing is, you referenced it as unused showers, and it's actually heavily used bathroom space right now. Some of that is.
And we would, again, trying to be mindful of the master plan. The original concept when we had a cafeteria here was that this red block that was labeled support would actually be restrooms that would serve the cafeteria. So we could make that decision when we got a little further along, that do those restrooms want to stay renovated in this area, or is it more appropriate to build them new today? So in the future, we don't have to reinvest in those. And so, again, a good clarification, you know, I think that's a detail, I'm confident the budget would support the renovation we're proposing right now, whether that was in the new construction or in renovation.
Okay.
So at HCE, this was the updated concept, Jonathan, per, per that request. And then the other component at HCE, Kevin, you had noted wanting just a little bit more clarification on the infrastructure costs and what was dependent and what wasn't.
Yeah.
We spent some time with the engineers. We had to do a conference call with Todd and that crew again, and fleshed back through all the proposed infrastructure scope relative to the proposed renovation, the existing building. And there were really, out of all the pieces in there, three specific items that they pointed to as components that could be considered non-dependent on the scope proposed. Okay? So they're kind of standalone items, that, with the caveat that it's still strongly recommended that they do that. So from their position, that they really do believe that these are items that the district should consider doing, but per, I think, the objective response to the question, they had said the three items really were the grease interceptor replacement, that was in the kitchen. We have the air handling unit at the gymnasium. Okay? So we're proposing replace the air handling unit at, at the gym. And then we were proposing to expand the outlets through the existing classrooms. And that was a goal, just to get more support for technology use and charging throughout the classrooms. And those are all items that they thought, and I think a fair response to the question, could be isolated.
Yeah.
But they do feel strongly that those are items the district should, should consider doing. Okay? So we can certainly talk more about that, but that was the response to that piece. So HCE, right now, $9.9 million. Whittanoe Middle School, that scope looks very similar now with the addition of the ADA compliance. Okay? So that, right, that total dollar amount is at $1.4 million. And then the high school, again, the scope per our last conversation has remained the same, with now the addition of the ADA compliance at $70,000. That puts the high school just over $4 million. And then when added up, we're at $16.60,158,300 as a proposed referendum question for this outline. So with that said, I think that, our goal in terms of updating this, I think, was to hit those main items, so certainly happy to answer any questions that might come with that.
So I know one of the things that we had been, that we finished off with last time was the, was the boiler piece at the, at the high school. I think one of the questions that was kind of charged was really, what is the, the usage and what is being proposed as far as this $700,000 goes for the, for the boilers? And so we just want to, want to touch upon that and then have any discussion, mostly focused towards Todd, because I'm going to keep it pretty, pretty, you know, high level, high level, Quinn. So what we're looking at here with these three boilers are three 12,000 BTU units, two in 1958, one in 1960, 68?
67.
67, 58, and a 67. And so.
Twelve million.
Twelve million BTUs.
There we go.
Yeah. Twelve million BTUs. And so one of the things that we wanted to look at is, you know, A, the efficiency of this, and then how they're being used. So when we, when we dug into this a little further with, with Frederickson and Todd and their team, what we looked at was, first of all, what are the efficiencies of these boiler units? And so these boilers are operating at, were purchased in, at these timeframes with the 80% efficiency. Over the years, that efficiency arose over time. Frederickson put it closer to now, 70% efficiency. When you purchase new boilers, they're showcased at like 94% efficiency. And so that's where you get some energy savings, what we would put somewhere around $8,000-10,000 a year in natural gas savings, and we'll talk about how we get there. So, so that's kind of just the efficiency piece of these, of these units. What we found interesting is that really what's being replaced, what would be replaced, is you would take out two of the units and replace them with six 4 million BTU.
Condensing boilers.
Condensing, thank you, condensing boilers.
That's very important.
What this does is it gives a lot more control and usage to the building. So right now, if we're running a boiler, we have to be running at 12 million BTUs, right? And so even if you're just trying to heat the pool on a day in October, when it's 65 and you don't really need any of the boilers at all, the 12 million BTU is running because you have to do the boiler. What, what is being proposed is replacing those with six 4 million BTU units, so that you're now only running a 4 million BTU if you're, if you're trying to heat the pool on a specific day. You're rotating along the other five as much as needed than for the remaining, where you could be very specific and say, I want the 4 million for the pool, I want the 4 million for the rest of the building today, and you're still running below the 12 million BTUs. What was interesting, I think, is, is that we have a very similar setup at the middle school. In 2004.
Correct.
The boilers were replaced at the middle school, and those were replaced with three of these modular units to, to be able to have a little more control. Now, the middle school is half the size of the high school, so they've got three, we'd be looking at six, which of course makes sense. What we then dived into is, well, what are the operating costs of the boilers at the middle school versus what we're doing here at the high school? And so one of the really great things that Matt did, as far as having really tight budgeting throughout the last years, is he always, he has a five-year average for each of his, his budgeted line items. And so the budgeted line item this year, which Matt put together for the contract services for our curling boilers, is $25,000 for upkeep of these boilers here at the high school, and it's 1,200 at the middle school. That's the average. The average is 16,000 for the boilers. There was a $6,000.
That was one of the main hot water valves that services this building had to be replaced. That was an additional cost. There's actually a second line item in there for another $6,500 for possible replacement of some of the hot water lines in the boiler room itself. That work has not been done yet.
So even without those things, we're averaging 15 grand a year to upkeep boilers here versus 1,200 at the middle school. So instead of three, we'd have six, double the cost, is kind of what we're thinking as far as what maintenance would be. And it works well at the high school from a, from that standpoint. If we were redoing a boiler room, this is the modular piece that we'd be putting in for that, for that control, instead of these huge units. The other thing I wanted to, to touch upon, I did already touch upon that, the boiler, the boiler work would be, I won't say a gut job, but it would be a lot of new pieces as well. VFDs, which I'm blanking on.
So.
Go ahead.
Yeah, let me just, it, it would be, as described to me by Jason from Frederickson and engineering, it would be a gut job of the boiler room. So what he's suggesting with that is six new boilers, all new hot water piping. We currently have four sets of heating pumps that service the building. One set of those pumps has what's called VFDs on them. It's, the, the simple term is variable freak drive. What that means is that when the building is not calling for a certain amount of heat, the pump slows down. So what Frederickson is proposing is two sets of building pumps with drives on each one, so they're running at the ultimate efficiency. So there's a little bit of cost savings electrically associated with that as well. So the boiler room would be a complete renovation.
So with each of those new boilers, we would be able to see a credit from Focus On Energy, something around the $12,000 per boiler?
One time?
One time. Yeah, one time. So, so obviously, you would, you would recognize that. So I, I think what we're, what we're, what we're finding out is that, at least, at least from, from what I see, and like, again, I'm not into the boilers or boiler person, but if we were redoing what this would look like, the current setup is certainly not what we would be operating with. We'd be, we'd be looking at doing much smaller, you know, more efficient units, to have more control of this building and save in that way, and customize what we need to do at different times of the year. They would still be rotating. You know, I, I think we got to the, to the question the last time of how, how are we using these three units right now? So, so in the Frederickson report, they said that on the, on those coldest days, you really should be using two. There's, they, they said that the way to use one would say that you could get there if you closed all the outside dampers to the building, which now you're, you're not allowing fresh air into the buildings on those days, and you're kind of questioning, you know, really, the air quality piece.
Yeah, indoor air quality requires that the outside air dampers never close more than a minimum of 10% or stay open a minimum of 10%. So we're really sacrificing indoor air quality when it comes to sealing this building up in order to try to run the building on one boiler. Personally, I would, I wouldn't be comfortable doing that. It, it's not something that we should be doing. We should be operating with two, leaving the outside air dampers at that minimum of 10% as it should be.
So that, that's where we're at.
So.
Okay, hold on. Let me ask you.
So what happens to the boiler with the oil?
So.
What happens to the oil?
That's the better question. So if we're successful in April, and the vote passes, and this is part of the scope of work, I would recommend, because we can't, we can't sell the oil, because it's old. It's been in there a long time. I talked with Jason from Frederickson about it, and he said, your best option is to burn the oil. So we would run that oil through the old boiler, the following, this coming winter, not this winter, this coming winter, use the oil up while still operating with the six new boilers that are in place, because we have no idea how efficient it's going to be to run the oil. It's not, the boilers are not, that particular boiler will not be 70% efficient running oil that could be as old as 40 years old. So we're going to get rid of the oil that's in the tank. I haven't gotten as far as if we're removing the tank, but the tank will be abandoned. And if there is a cost savings, and we can leave that boiler down there and not remove it, because removing something that's a quarter of the size of this room, there's a cost to it. So if that boiler's abandoned and stays down there, if it stays hooked up as a, as a backup, that would be an option, just to leave it down there.
Any other questions about any of it?
I do, I have a question, not about the boiler.
Yeah, no, anything.
I have a question about the ADA for the, for the high school. One bathroom per floor. In the middle school, it says one set of bathrooms on each floor. So what does that mean? One bathroom per floor? And $69,900 doesn't seem like a lot to renovate very many bathrooms.
Yep. So there, we would be targeting at least getting a minimum of one on each floor, and the hope there is that we can go in and just adjust the fixtures and put new partitions in and just update the finishes of that space. So not fully gutting.
So you're talking one boys and one girls? Or are you talking one?
I think one unisex per floor was our target for, for the high school.
So a private bathroom?
Can I push on that a little bit? I'm not clear. We have a unisex bathroom? Where is it? What, what?
Let me just say, so give me one second, let me pull up that. Works. So the, I, and I may have misquoted there, so the, I think that's driven by the size of the physical restroom. I think the, the middle school, I may apologize if I misquoted, the middle school bathrooms are physically larger. The group bathrooms are larger, there's more stalls in them. At the high school, the largest ones look like we have three stalls in each. Okay? So it's, it's just a lot smaller. So it'd be a boys and a girls at each floor.
With a set?
It would be.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, just the size, the physical size of the room is smaller, so good clarification.
Would they be private bathrooms?
They would not be. It'd be the regular, kind of shared boys and shared girls bathrooms.
I would suggest looking at something that can be at least operate in that function, because that would address the issues that we've been talking about over the years of parents who come with student aid assistance in the evening to events, and if it were, if they were able to lock it, then they, you could have a mother going in with a son to assist, as well as addressing transgender.
Yeah, it did come up. Remember that now.
We could certainly study that.
We had a parent come in front of us.
Right.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, Quinn?
Well, I, I thank you for giving more information on the boilers. It's a, it's a big ticket item, there's no doubt. And I understand where John is coming from, that they, they run, you know? But when you get into the cost of upkeep, and the cost of, the upkeep number is huge. That's a big number, as opposed to what it would be if we went to these modular units. In, after the last meeting, I, I was clearly on the fence towards not replacing them. And I, but now I, I don't see how we, how we can't replace them, not only for the cost savings, but if some, and they say it right in the report, what happens if something happens to them and we can't fix them? You know, I've got a, I've got a dryer at home that's, the button doesn't work, but you just push it and it, she runs. And if you go at home, it's still running, you know? Kelly won't replace it, so it runs. But I can go out tomorrow and get it and replace it, and there's no downtime, or very little downtime. I can't, I can't justify safety of our children, safety of our staff, safety of the building, if we do have a problem. We've got 50, 60 years out of these things, 60 on the, on the originals and 50 on the, on the one. It's time, it's time to replace. It is. What about scrap? Aren't there scrap dealers out there that take it apart for scrap and, I don't know?
There certainly are. We haven't factored in the revenue side.
Right.
So this is just the cost portion.
Well, I thank you for doing the work, the numbers. We didn't have the numbers last time, we have the numbers now, that support, that are very costly to maintain them, and I think it's time to replace.
Any other questions?
And I would assume that, that is, at Hill's Corners, it's being replaced as well? That's, the boilers are being replaced there as well?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Well, again, I prefer this particular configuration, because it hits all of our buildings. It's balanced between the structure of the building and the academic needs that we're facing. And it kept the cost in the referendum lower. Sorry, I'm 20 minutes late. Yeah, I know, I'm cheap, I admit it. But I, I like the balance of this particular proposal much better. And as far as the boilers go, they need to be replaced. And I'm okay with that.
Anything else? Okay, Kevin?
You want to come back to me? Because I don't want, I'm just going to get off topic with the boiler thing. John, I, you, I assume you.
I got a quick thing.
You might want to say something about that first, so just to stay with it, you can go first if you want.
All right, sure. So the rest of the plan, I, I think there's a decent, there's a decent balance. I mean, I, like, some things I wonder about, but, you know, that will come out in further discussion and, and, you know, as we vet things out. But the boiler thing, I've got some more numbers for you. I'm disappointed in this letter. If the report you're referring to is a letter from Frederickson, it's not a report on our boilers. That is a letter that says, it talks about how old the boilers were. I, I already addressed the issue with the age of the boilers. If you run one a year, you're effectively, they're 20 years old. If they're 60 years old and they've been run every third year, they're 20 years old. It depends on how they've been maintained. You know, some people maintain a car such that it needs to be replaced in eight years, and other people can maintain it where you can run it for 20. So I'm not concerned about the age, I'm concerned about the condition of the actual hardware. So in their, their first paragraph, they start out talking about the age. To me, that's an irrelevant paragraph. I'm not trying to be callous about it, but to me, this letter knocks down their credibility some, and I'll, I'll get to why. The, to, to, to address a couple of points, though, that Mike stated in this, these boilers are not, they're either on or they're off. They're not like that. I don't, so it's not either run it at 12 million BTUs or you don't run it. You, you can crank it up as much or as little as you like, up to 12 million BTU. The, I don't know about the new high-efficiency condenser ones that you're talking about, but I do know about these. Correct me if I'm wrong, Todd.
As it was explained to me by Jason, the way to fluctuate the amount of heat that is in the building is to turn the water temperature up and down on the boilers that we have. The boilers that we have are not condensing, which means that the return water temperature cannot drop below 140 degrees, because then they condense. Condensing causes damage to the boilers. So the, the outfeed water, as I was told, has to be a minimum of 160 degrees.
Okay.
The return temp water minimum is 140 degrees in order for, like I said, not to condense. The new boilers that we are, that Frederickson is proposing, condensating boilers, the supply water temperature can be turned as low as 90 degrees, and we And we would do that in the instance to heat the pool water and also the reheat system that's in the building. Mike didn't really touch on that, I'll explain that really quick what that is. So in the summertime, there's a system in the building that when the air conditioning runs, if the building gets too cool, it reheats it. So in the building, one of the boilers that, that will operate the pool will also operate that same reheat system. That's where the biggest efficiency comes in, because the lower we run the water temperature on the condensing boiler, the higher the efficiency number goes.
The more efficient stuff is also more expensive to maintain. Because when they break, they're more expensive and they tend to break more than things like this. So to continue with the things.
Hold on, to that point though, if the, if you was budgeting 1,200 maintenance at the middle school each year.
Is that 1,200 per boiler or is that 1,200 for the building? I don't know.
1,200, well, you said 1,200 for the building. But either way, that's still lower than 25,000 or 16,000.
Sure. Yep.
So to that point, it could be cheaper, able, we're paying less to maintain those boilers than we are the older ones here.
So it's the taxpayer dollars. So when you're talking about $9,000 in fuel savings and what, 11,000 or something like that, I, I don't remember the numbers, in, in boiler maintenance savings, you're looking at $20,000 savings a year, which means that it would pay for themselves and this, this project would pay for itself in 35 years. Am I right? And yet these boilers will age out before then. So it will never pay for itself.
So the, the actual numbers, current cost to maintain this year, $25,714 here at the high school. Five-year average at the middle school was about $1,200. The new boiler cost to maintain here would be roughly $2,500. The energy savings potential was $10,750 per year. I believe that that number is conservative. So a cost avoidance with the new boiler plan here at the high school is $33,964 per year.
So 20 years, 25 years to get your money back, right?
If that's the purpose, yes.
Well, I'm just, it's, it's, it's not my money. Well, part of it is, I pay taxes, but I'm just talking about, if we want to talk about the expenses, you know, we pay, we pay more each year or we pay a lot, we ask a lot from the taxpayers right now. So they'll never pay, the project, if you want to look at it that way, will never pay for itself. But yes, it would be cheaper each year, but not cheaper to the taxpayers to take out that chunk of money from them.
Can I say something?
I've got other stuff, but.
Just to your point, but if we don't do the change, whenever we scoop any money, we'll be spending money, 30,000, 30,000, 33,000 euro will be going out the door. At least we'll be recouping our cost.
No, you won't.
In savings.
No, you won't. Well, okay, in, in our, in our, in your, in your annual budget savings, you will.
Yep.
But the budget came from this, comes from the same places as referendum money, which is the taxpayers. So you're asking them to, we'll be asking them to pay for 25 years of boiler savings, of, of energy savings at the high school upfront as part of this 16 point, not quite $2 million thing. We ask them to pay for that upfront and then we'll be saving a 20th or a 25th of that every year. So I'm looking at the total price tag to the taxpayers and what the payback is. As far as the other points on this, on this, this letter, when they say things like, based, let's see, uh, let's see, Boiler Rep, they comment, they, they talked to, did not recommend retubing if we have problems with the tubing. We've already had some retubing done to the different boilers. Part of that maintenance you're talking about is retubing boilers, retubing the portions of, of boilers, because they've got a lot of tubes in there, right? So it's the ones that are in, that look like they may need some replacement, they get replaced. That's part of, that's why, one reason these boilers are in such good shape. So the retubing, he's talked about, the guy doesn't recommend it. We're already doing that as part of the maintenance stuff, which is why we have perfectly good boilers. Did they do any testing at all?
Can I just say something, John?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not trying to cut you off, I just want to speak to your point.
Sure.
So I actually had our current boiler company come in and provide me with an estimate to retube a boiler. That estimate came in at $30,066 per boiler. What is currently in the budget for maintenance retubing is $2,500, which would probably cover one or two tubes, depending on how far they have to go with them. So I just, I just want you to have a full understanding of what it costs to actually retube the entire boiler, what's actually in the budget for an emergency tube replacement.
Yeah, so we haven't done a full tube replacement on a boiler because we don't, we haven't needed it. And we haven't needed it because they replace what's needed as, after the season, they replace what's needed as it is. That maintenance thing also includes opening up each boiler and inspecting them. From that, I assume it's the same company that you're talking about?
Yes.
Did this, did, did Fredrickson in this report do any testing at all?
That's my knowledge.
Do you know what the last numbers were for the efficiency of our boilers?
I do not. I'm using Fredrickson's numbers.
Right. Fredrickson says, based on, it's in third paragraph, based on our experience, the current efficiency is likely about 70%. The last combustion test report on our boilers, and I can't remember the year that was done, but it was well after, Fredrickson says, that according to the books, the A S H R A E, that well after the life expectancy expired on these boilers, it was just within the last few years, the combustion test was, tells you how efficient they are, was 83%.
The only, the only thing that I would say to that is that there's a plate on the boiler itself that indicates that new, that the boiler was 80% efficient. I'm not, not.
I'm just telling you what the test was.
I have a hard time understanding how it, it goes up when they're 60 years old.
It might have started at 85. You know, mileage on cars on the stickers aren't exactly what it says on the sticker when you roll it off the lot, depends on how you drive it and everything else. So the combustion tests on the boilers were 83% the last time it was checked and I'm not sure, it was just a few years ago, but I'm not sure when. It's probably in your records.
Actually, I searched through everything that is on Matt's hard drive. That's where I came up with some of this information as to what we've done, what we haven't done. I did not find anything as far as a combustion test.
Okay, well, my information was 83% and I can find a source for that if you like.
No.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to put actual numbers out there versus Fredrickson's report, which is based on their experience. And I'm talking about our actual stuff. So if they didn't do any NDT, non-destructive testing, to find out the condition of our tubes, then, and if they didn't open up the boilers to look in them, then they don't have a visual and they don't have a non-visual NDT data to, to tell us what kind of shape they're in. But they have based on their experience, well, these boilers weren't maintained the way maybe their experience has other places maintaining boilers. And when they talk about many of the parts aren't available, my information is that all of the parts are still available locally. So I'm disappointed in this report because I don't think it's anywhere near accurate. Because it, it reflects based on their experience, it doesn't reflect based on our situation.
Matt stood before us and told us that they are not available, that he machined them himself. He stood before us.
I remember him saying he machined them.
He's, I don't know if you were on the board at the time or not, but that's what he said. And that's what his expertise, expertise was in, and that we were very fortunate that his expertise were in that. Otherwise, we'd be in trouble.
Last time I talked to Matt, he told me all the parts were still available.
Well, he told a different story, because he stood in front of us and told us different.
I believe, the only place I remember hearing anything about machining is I said that if parts weren't available, that they could be machined locally.
It was from Matt.
Well, that's news to me, because I never heard him say that. In any case, what I understand is all the parts are still available. So what disappoints me about this is the, based on their experience, 70% efficiency, which is not the case. Retubing is prohibitively expensive, but yet we've, as part of our maintenance, we've had that done, because not all the tubes go bad at the same time. If there's a hot spot or something like that, that, that wears on a tube, and you don't need to retube a boiler like these all at once. So the, it's just, there's, there's flaws all over this and it really disappoints me.
I have a question to that, if you don't mind. So say the boilers just die today, where's the money going to come from to cover it, is my question? What do we do? What is, what is the emergency plan? Do we have any?
We have to be fund balanced, which would be, the, the one thing, and we'll get this word out there as we, as we pass the question and start getting the pavement, what's nice about, what's nice about the referendum is that you're spreading costs out over 20 years.
Yeah.
We've talked about this a lot, right? Where if we would have an unexpected large expense, let's just call it $700,000, you're dipping into fund balance to cover that, which maybe in and of itself is not bad, but that is a $700,000 hit to your budget that you weren't expecting. And our taxpayers pay for that.
Yeah.
At 35% loss in state aid. So you're talking about a 300 to 400,000, no, 300,000 dollar loss in state aid when you have those massive expenditures such as this at, at one time. The nice piece about a referendum is that you're able to pay, you're able to pay it back over the 20 years, spread that cost out and, and show, and have the, the hit be, you know, wrapped up in an, in an entire project in a much slower case over, over 20 years. But it's not that you wouldn't be able to do it, you'd be hitting your fund balance and hitting that expense.
With that, and then what kind of turnaround is it in trying to, if we had to do this start today to replace it with what we're planning here, what kind of turnaround is that to get that done? You know, like a timeframe?
If we were doing referendum?
No, like if somebody like today started working, like it's broken, let's go in here and start replacing this thing, what kind of turnaround are we talking?
Just fire up another boiler.
I would estimate a couple of months.
I'm assuming they all die, that's what I'm just going off of, I'm sorry.
On the scope of the work, I would say a few months.
Okay, that's, I guess.
And that's even finding a company with the availability to do the installation.
Correct.
And paying probably a premium.
Yeah, the number won't be 700,000, it'll be 20% higher.
That's if all three boilers were to die at the same time.
I'm just answering Kevin's question.
Yeah, I, I know, but that's what I phrase a question as.
Sure.
If they all died right now, what is our, because I, we've not really talked about what if that happens? Because even if, what if the referendum fails, if there, if there is one, let's say, and that's on there, what if it fails, what do we do? And I just wanted to make that clear, because I was confused as to what our steps would be, I wanted to understand what it was.
Good job, go.
So in reality, if a boiler goes down, you fire up another one. By the time the building's cooling down, it's already heating up from the other, from the next boiler that's coming up. And you don't have to pay exorbitant costs in the middle winter to repair the one that just went down, because aside from the one that's running, you still have a spare. So you, you fix it when you can call the shots with the contractor and you pay 20 grand to get it fixed, not 700, and, and, and you're done. I just, there's, there's too many, I don't know, 16.15, 8, 3 million dollars and I'm picking on a 700,000 dollar project, but, but my, my point is, I don't like replacing stuff that's working fine and has no, there's, in my mind, there's just, I mean, it's pointless. So maybe I'm cheaper than Stephanie, I don't know. And maybe, maybe that's the case, but.
Keep going.
I have, I just, I mean, I think I, like I said, I think I, for me, I, it's, it's not running 12,000, 12 million BTU at once necessarily and there's just problems with this. And thank you very much.
What other items? Or is that it?
I did want to know, so, yeah, this is the one that I wanted. The stormwater flooding repair at the high school, we did have flooding this last year and it's not the first time that, that your office and that whole area has flooded. When they started digging into it, they, they discovered further problems that extended on out into the courtyard, I think, and then beyond. 104,900 is the, is the proposed referendum amount for that. But next to it, it says unknown issue, requires further investigation, multiple phases. How can you put a price on it?
We can't, that's why we stated that.
So that's the best guess. And remember, if Mike brought information a couple of months ago about the cost to potentially start the process, then be a multi-phase process? So this is just building the best estimate on what it could potentially cost?
Well, my thing is, since they don't know what it is, I don't know what 105,000 dollars includes.
Well.
Go ahead.
That was, that, that initial amount of money, the 104,000 dollars, that was to address the first phase that we feel we've diagnosed.
Which is?
It's the area underneath where my office is, in the area in the storage room behind my office. I've had a sewer company come in and put cameras in the sewer lines. They, they found a few small holes in that sewer line that could be part of the problem. They, they still believe that that's not the ultimate cause. They feel that it, it's possibly when the addition was put on the building, that some drain tile that was part of the original structure was not tied back in. It's, that's as far as I got with the investigation. One of the reasons why I stopped there was because they actually couldn't get the camera past the point. So the thought was, we get it to the point that we can get the camera to repair that, then we put the camera back in the line, get out into the courtyard, address what's going on in the courtyard, and then actually, once we're into the courtyard, then we turn and go towards the loading dock in the back of the building. That's why it's a phase thing.
Sure. Did, is any of that tied to what happened at the same time, which is, I think, water from the roof getting down through, how did it happen? Did it down, did it get down through the, the vent system and come up through the drinking fountain drains in the gym?
That, that is one of the phases. That also has to do with, there's a drain in the mechanical room in the pool room, where we have water that comes up out of the floor there as well. I did not camera that area yet. It's, it's something that needs to be done. As outlined here, it's multiple phases.
Okay. Thanks very much, appreciate it.
Kevin?
All right, just in the stuff here in the high school, because I guess that's where I got kind of a focus in this. I know we toured the locker rooms and the pool stuff. What is all it is, anything to do with the locker rooms included in here? None? And the pool repairs and improvements would potentially include the walkway, et cetera? Or no? Okay, so just none of that?
Does it need more?
What we are, yeah, what we were touring, okay. All right, so I guess my biggest question when it comes to all this, and that's to everybody on the board, because I guess I haven't heard a lot of anyone being vocalized, yeah, I think this is great that we're doing this or that. The other thing, it's kind of been like, yeah, this looks good, let's, okay, what's next? When we look at Hales Corners Elementary, I know we're putting 9.983 in there, what is the grand thing we're getting out of this, other than a potential building block for something else 10 years from now? Which then might not resolve other issues we might have at that point. I, we're moving, we're getting rid of an old section, we're putting in a new section. Not to say that these sections aren't functional now with various retrofitting that could change it to what we need for our spaces and fix things for ADA, but we're not solving, I don't think we're solving the bigger issues going on with that at all. And we, we're putting 9.9 into that, almost 10 million dollars. And it just, to me, I feel like that could be spread somewhere else to cover other things and make bigger impacts. Not to say that we wouldn't give any money to Hales Corners Elementary, I would still get, I would still, I mean, I have to go back through the big one where it said all the different things we could do, but I don't see what the 9.9, 10 million dollars, what the biggest thing we're getting out of it, other than we're ripping down one area, adding a new one. We still have the same ultimate thing of functional school, we just have slightly nicer spaces than we did before. Whereas we're still not addressing a major issue from the referendum as well, we're not even touching that, other than the fact that we're going to try to hopefully get some cost savings by not leaking an additional 500,000, 600,000, 1,000 gallons a year, or not a year, a day, excuse me.
600 a day, isn't it?
600.
600, but I, how many go, so was 800, 200 to evaporation?
300, roughly 300 block off.
Oh, was it 1,000? Okay.
300 totals through evaporation.
Gotcha, that's, I didn't have the number.
Right.
400.
I guess I've not heard anybody say, no, I don't think we should do this, and I've not heard anybody say, absolutely yes, this is going to be our best thing. And I feel like we're just kind of moving along to the next meeting until it ends up where we're getting a vote. And even then, I don't even know where half of us stand on any of this stuff or what somebody's really passionate about, what we think we need. Obviously, there's nobody here in the audience making comments, so it's hard to say. And again, when it came to the high school and when it came to the pool situation, I said my piece as far as what I thought about the survey and what that did as far as making it an afterthought, not addressing other issues with it. I, I just, I, I don't see it. not addressing other issues with it. I, I just, I, I, I don't see it. I mean, I see the stuff we're doing in the high school, I understand what we're doing, I'm all about, we have to fix that wing of the school and all the other stuff, and that's included in here, but I still think that's a major part of our school that we're not addressing, we're gonna have to put that off for ten years before, at a minimum of ten years, before we potentially see anything with it.
Do you, do you honestly think if we took the pool to referendum, the community would support it?
If it was better framed into what the situation is. We framed the situation of the competitions in the survey, which I think put a bad light on it for sure, and that might draw, drain the support that it might have had. But I think if it was better organized and not just the pool, and better organized as far as the spread of money, I think it could pass, yeah. I honestly do.
I, I don't.
And I'm saying that as far as what we're doing at Hale's Corners, because right now, I mean, this, this, the idea of just to pass one to pass one does nothing for me. What are, what are we accomplishing? Again, what are we, with Hale's Corners, I still haven't seen what's the big wow factor, than then we're ripping down the really old wing and putting on some new thing, which is replacing the classrooms, making better classrooms, when, how much square footage are we gaining? I mean, I know we need bigger spots in both schools, like both the teachers said, both schools have a lot of students, which there's nothing we can do about regarding that, but-
Don't forget that it's, it's helping to address the traffic flow and parking as well.
It's a pretty expensive ticket for that.
I agree, but no matter what we have to do with parking, it seems there's some issue anyway. I understand it sucks, and I've heard it from the people that were here, but when this is all said and done, what am I gonna hear from the community? I don't understand what, are they gonna say, wow, that's really great, or are they gonna tell us sixteen million got us that? So-
Any other questions or about any other items or?
Um, the bathroom one, they already got to, that was gonna be my other question. Uh, and the fire alarm, that, the whole thing, that addresses the whole thing we've been talking about a couple of weeks in Edgerton, right?
Mm-hmm. It's to bring us to code compliance.
Yep. I'm good, I don't have any other questions.
Anybody want to comment on his question about? How do you feel about this?
I mean, and Kevin, you're right, I mean, but there's only so much money, and there's only so much we can do. And if we wanted the big wow factor, we're gonna be spending a lot more than sixteen million dollars. You know, yeah, we're not getting a new cafeteria for, uh, for Hale's Corners, and we're not doing a lot in Edgerton, and, um, but there's only so much we can do, and at least we're setting it up to, for future, to add a cafeteria in at Hale's Corners. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, and, and, I mean, yeah, it's partially correct.
So, um, I, I couldn't support reallocating the chunk of that to redo a pool. I think that the referendum will fail, and we will lose credibility in the community based on the feedback we receive, whatever the-
I'm not saying, see what you're saying, I'm not gonna interrupt you.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I know what you're, the question, I know you weren't gonna cut me off, but, um, the question, however it's phrased, that still was really low on the priority list, and at the top was HCE, and, um, if we ignore that and do the pool or something else, we're gonna lose credibility with the district, in the community. Um, I, I can't support that. Frankly, um, I think we should be spending more overall, because for us that have kids that travel to other schools, walk into schools, whether it's, and typically, we'll just focus on the high school, right? Um, we were in Greenfield last week, gorgeous when you walk in. When we're in, when we're in all these other districts, gorgeous when you walk in. You walk in here, give me a break. It's like, really, this is, this is our best foot forward? Um, so, we've gotta start somewhere, though. It should be more, it should be addressing more. If we talk about, we want the best district, we want the best facilities, we want the best that, we're not even close to that, and sixteen million isn't gonna get us there. Um, so, as Nancy said, the nine point nine, is it everything we want, or should we be doing at HCE? No. But it's a compromise to bring it up closer to what we need while also reallocating funds to elsewhere. Because as we said before, if we do the, the cafeteria and everything else, that's leaving, what, three, four million dollars for every other building? Um, and I think the only way we're gonna get anything passed is if we are addressing issues at each building. Um, so, to your point, yeah, am I excited about everything we're getting done here? No. But, I'm relieved that we're able to do as much as we're talking about, hit a lot of major things that we can't do out of it. Now, um, you know, with the pool, with redoing the, the viewing upstairs, we already said we can pull that out of operating budget, so you don't need to put that in the referendum, that's good, we can do that. Um, to redo the locker rooms, or to add a hallway and reduce, all that, it could be short sighted if down the line we do redo the pool, or however you wanna do it, then we may be ripping that out and starting over. I think what we're doing is being practical about what can we get done now to make it as usable as possible, and build for the future, right, and create, whether it's five years, ten years, whatever it is, um, to get us set up for the next step. Because realistically, there's a whole lot of next steps, this isn't the end of it. I mean, this is a starting point that probably should have happened fifteen years ago, but we're stuck with what we have, and we're trying to make the best of it.
We went for the whole enchilada last, last time.
Let's not go back to there, I'm never a fan-
You're saying, well, you're, you're saying there's no wow factor, right?
No, I'm not saying we should go for everything, but I'm saying there is zero concern or contingency plan for what if this doesn't happen, what if we don't do anything there? What is our contingency plan? We have ten, if this passes, you're sitting on that for ten years, what are we doing in the meantime? Are we gonna take your plan, your, your comment you make sometimes, are we just gonna pave this thing over? Because I mean, what are we gonna do? What do we do for ten years there?
Huge-
Are we addressing, that's my whole thing, is what are, what are we taking care of in the meantime? Yeah, I'm all for fixing the ADA stuff, academics all the way and all of this stuff, but what are, that, that's my big thing, is there's no, okay, we should, we can't do that now, what is our plan for that? We have nothing.
So that's on us. Whatever happens with this, to sit down and create that plan, to answer that question, we have to have a plan for each building, not, the pool included in that. We have to have a plan for each building, where it needs to go and how we need to get there. Whether that means incremental investments each year before we can do another referendum, but you're right, the conversation has to happen.
Yeah.
Next year. You don't have to wait ten years to go to referendum, I just wanna-
Well, we're gonna add thirteen million this year, or sixteen million this year, uh, we're gonna add another sixteen million next year, it's not gonna happen there. But I'm saying, yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm saying, besides the fact that there's nothing, we're still sitting on it, and it's not resolving a current issue right away. We are, this is all planned, all the stuff we're doing here is planning for the future. The boilers is a plan for the future of something. It's not addressing a current issue. A lot of these, I mean, some of these things, yeah, the ADA stuff, these are all current issues, but we're also trying to retrofit and do stuff as a plan for the future. We don't need to do something right now for a lot of, some of these things, you don't need to. We're doing it so that we can move in that direction.
John? So I have to agree with a bunch of what Kevin's saying, because basically, it's what I've been saying for a while. We started out on this path of, of, um, to do, um, certain things, and we ended up with a, a list of replacing, you know, upgrading plumbing, upgrading electrical stuff that's still functional, and that's why I keep coming back to the boilers, because it's, it's all by itself on a price tag, you know, and as Kevin says, you're trying to replace something, so you don't have a problem down the road, yet we're not directing money towards, um, towards some of the issues that we have now, whether it's the, the, the pool or, or other space, or these things that are left out here. So, and I'd have to go back to the, well, the discussions for the past three years and the ten-year plan that we had to, uh, to pull out more specifics, but the, the pool is an easy one. I mean, the locker rooms are an easy one. There's nothing in here for the locker rooms, yet, you know, we, we've seen them, and we agree, we don't like people going through there, and it's, it's nice in theory to think that you can direct everybody but coaches and swimmers up onto, uh, what's upstairs, but I, I think that, I think that it's not, uh, it won't be a hundred percent enough to be able to keep all folks out of the locker room. So, I mean, there's still things we need to address there that this doesn't address. There are some, what I would consider needs, that we're not spending, that we're not addressing with, with this price tag, while there are other things that aren't needs, but are, um, improvements that we are addressing, and I think the balance is not there.
Anything else? Can we move on? Okay.
What are we gonna move on to?
We're not voting tonight.
Well, to some of your points, they're, they're good points, there's no doubt. But we went to advisory committee. We said, two years ago, or three years ago, we told the district what, what we thought in each area.
Yeah.
We thought, and I, I was fully behind them. And, and the people said, no. Too costly, whatever the reason was, okay? So, we went to advisory committee, they worked on it, they brought items back to us, we put it out to the public. We can't change the plan. I, I, I understand that there's things that need to be addressed. We either gonna go, we either gonna tell the people what we think is right, and go down that road again, or listen to what was brought to us and go with it. I don't know where to come up with the money for the pool. Unless you ask for more. And then, and we're all gonna have things that we don't want in here, that we don't, I don't know how to resolve that. Uh, but I do know that if the board as a whole votes in favor of this, we all need to back it.
Well, I'm not saying otherwise on that. The argument pertains more or less to what would be, because it's the two vote thing of, what is the question going to be, are we gonna vote for the question, then whether or not we're going to referendum is more or less, the first part is where we run into something in there, um, as far as what we're talking about now, not necessarily the second part. I support the board's decision either way, is one of our, right there, majority rules and move on. Um, but I just, my whole thing was, I mean, I have seen no, not, not necessarily enthusiasm, but yep, I love this on here, I can't, we're doing this, and nobody's really been vocal about it, and it's hard for me to gauge where everybody's at. I mean, I voice my opinion, but not many other people have said much on the topic, other than, great, we're within the dollar, about, you know, dollar amount, or something like that.
Well, I think because we all realize it's a big hole, that's not being, I, that's, that's the white elephant, there's no doubt.
We gotta talk about it, though, I mean, we can't just sit on it, because-
What are we gonna do?
But I'm saying, at least, at least indulge me with your thoughts on something, and we had nothing for the last five meetings.
As far as the pool?
I mean, that's amazing, we're talking about what happened, everybody keeps going back to what happened with the referendum. We're always focused on Hale's Corners, and even when we developed the survey, and I said, what is this doing at the end of the thing?
Right.
Nobody said anything. It was-
I did.
Well, that's, just in general. It was, it was preface as an afterthought, and we didn't really talk about it, and talk about it, and talk about it, and now we're back to, we're finally like, to one meeting before where we have to be, to finally have some kind of discussion on it. And then at, at that point, we're gonna deal with, well, we'll talk about it in a year, or however you wanna phrase whatever, whatever you said, talk about it in a year, and then it's, we talk about it next year, and we'll talk about it this year, and it's, it's still lingering there, it's still there.
Well, it would be great to have a pool, or to have an auditorium like Greenfield does, but there, there's just not support in this district for it. You know, I'll be happy to have the pool liner replaced, and to have people to sit upstairs to watch the pool, you know, to watch the people in the pool. I just don't think our district is big enough, or, I mean, there's a lot of things that we need. Edgerton needs a new gym, I mean, their gym is so tiny. I mean, there's a lot of needs, we can't do them all.
The thing that you have, we have hanging over us still is, you did that big old football stadium somehow, you do nothing for the pool. I don't know, I mean, I don't know the ins and outs of all that all work, but that's still hanging over us, we did that. What are we getting out of that when you didn't do anything here?
Those are choices made prior to-
Yeah, I know, I mean, but that's, that's still something that, that hangs-
That was the same argument, you know, we couldn't have, um, meets because-
The track, yeah.
They couldn't run on the track, you know, the track was disintegrating, was peeling apart.
Yeah.
And underwater sometimes.
So, I mean, that was, that was the same argument.
It just so happened that those people that got together saw the need and cared more about-
No, I, I get it, but I'm just saying, it's still something that hangs over it, whether, whether or not it, and I've heard a few parents, when they do come, say that all the time, that's one of their first things that they say.
They were able to do that without referendum, and they were willing to spend the money.
And there was a parent group that was very active and really pushed that through. We, we don't see a parent group for the swimming pool. I mean, we, we had one parent come and talk to us about the swimming pool. Yeah, we know the swimming pool needs to be replaced. We knew it when it went to referendum the last time, but there's nobody there pushing it, there's nobody there helping to get it passed. There's just not that much, you know, there's just not that much interest in it, I don't think.
And I, and I, I think to that point, no matter how the question was phrased, if people saw it as a priority, they would have said yes.
I think the phrasing helps guide how much of a priority they're gonna see it.
I get what you're saying, but I think you would have had a better understanding of the priority had it been lumped into part of the high school and not, and after you decided whether or not you wanted to spend forty-four million dollars, you wanna spend an additional seven, because we can't hold meets. But that's in the past, I can't change what the survey was, I can't do anything of that, it, it happened. But that's my whole point with that, is it just keeps getting pushed back, and I just, I want some kind of discussion we had, which we had, that's all.
Did the advisory committee, uh, address the pool? Did they discuss it?
Yeah, it was, I think, what they, they shared with the board in their final report in terms of what that looks like. And I think one of their primary recommendations they came back to us is that, if you go and look at their bullet list, is that the district needed a master plan. They felt like they were, again, the selection of items that were on the original question that they were asked to look at, once they stood back and worked, worked with Matt and Lori and whatever, that there were, um, that there really needed to be a district master plan to look at things in order to fully prioritize everything, rather than just, you know, the items that were there, or whatever, so. Um, and I think that that's having those conversations. Again, you know, what, for what it's worth, my voice in all of it, I mean, I think it is challenging, you know, right now, looking at, um, area districts, some very close to us who have either gone through or will be going through referendums in the next year. We have another one of our neighboring districts who is in our process and will be going in November, using the same architectural firm that we are. So I get it, and I think talking with the community group, the group that maybe wasn't in sort of support of it last time, and just listening to their voice this time and where it was, absolutely. Would I love to see a forty million dollar price take at the end of it, absolutely. Um, and so at the end of it, um, if you don't start somewhere, there won't be anything to do. So part of it is, I think there are compromises, and when you start from the entire master plan to bring it down, then things have domino effects, because if you don't do this, then it doesn't make sense to do that, and I think that's where we're finding ourselves. And when you start to, you know, pull away at each of those layers, and you look at now what's left from the original list of forty-four million, there may be less, you know, glitz or glamour, or whatever it is, but it's the foundations for stuff that can be put in after. Um, pretty strong voice out there still in the community about, you know, the, the operational stuff, or whatever that means to a person. Different people have different meanings there. I, I do think that there's a balance between learning spaces and mechanical operational. It'd be challenged to do one without the other, so I do think that there's a balance, and there's some foundational pieces. I mean, I think you could look at any building and say that there are more needs, but some of those are domino effects. You can't do A without B, so therefore we have to do C. So when you're left with C, you're like, well, that's not so exciting. But that's what we can do for C.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think that this is where we are. I'm personally feeling, you know, good about the projects that are here, because they are some building blocks that we can look at, either some operational pieces that we can build on there, because these are some things that we couldn't do out of some operating things, but we've built some foundational building blocks that through our operating budgets could be added on to some of those pieces. Some of these things couldn't be done without referendum, that we can't chunk away. I mean, we've talked about the roof and how we would go and chunk away at that. Um, you know, we could do bathrooms, sure, but in order to do a whole scale thing and say we're making improvements, I feel good about that we're touching all of those places, you know, places in there. You know, the learning spaces, even in the high school, we talk about that, it's got more square footage than our other three buildings combined, and talk about learning spaces there. I mean, we can talk about all of there is, but I think that where we're left with in the price tag, and what I'm hearing right now from where this is, from the one hundred plus people that are on the email list that are getting this, they're feeling, I'm, I'm feeling that there is support for what we are seeing here, and I think that while our ultimate goal is not to just- And I think that while our ultimate goal is not to just pass it, to make sure that what we're passing with it is, is in alignment with our needs, I don't think we've added anything on here that's not in align with a master plan or doesn't make sense. So, for what that's worth.
Thank you.
Just say one last thing, when we, when you talked, because you mentioned the advisory committee. They did come before us, and that's where they presented whatever, however wrong their numbers might've been, how much they could tolerate for a pool, and that's when I tried to poll them, and not everybody was happy about it, but it was more or less, could you support something like this? And every single one of them, it was the whole idea that, yeah, we're in consensus agreement that something in this price range was adequate and we could deal with something like that. Coming from the people, that all came with the, were a good portion of them of no people. That did happen at some point.
Do you remember what that price range was?
I'd have to go back to the meeting, that was like, a year ago.
Um, so, let me ask. At what point do we need to finalize all the items on this? Can we get the question together? Can we do all of that, and after we voted on the question, can we still continue refining?
Yeah, we would be working with orals to be sure they're comfortable that the scope still aligns with the language of the question.
Well, and you saw, you saw the language, I mean, the big thing is the dollar note. I, I mean, so, I think you saw the language and really how general it is, and there's purpose to that, right? I mean, our story is what adds detail to the referendum question in the end. But, but you can't pass a question at sixteen point one and say, "Let's take the boilers out and now it's fifteen point four." That's, that's not how it works. You'd be reallocating those dollars within the scope of the question. Whether that be whatever that would look like. You know, usually when you pass a question, you're pretty set on what, on what scope is, for the, for the most part. You know, obviously we have contingencies in for different things like that, but sixteen point one six, which is in the question, you know, once, once that goes and once that question, anything has to be in the framework of that question.
So, to your point, how do we proceed? It's gonna come down to a vote, right? Either we all vote, or however comes out on these individual items. So, I think right now, if we can focus on coming to agreement on the dollar amount, getting the question done, and then we just hold a vote. It doesn't have to be line item, it can be whatever, but vote. Are you comfortable with the way the project is laid out, yes or no? If it's a yes, majority has it. If it's a no, then we can refine it.
Is that before questions develops?
Why though, if we don't need to?
No, I was asking, is that what you were, like
No, 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 the opposite. I think we need to look at them separately. Are we okay with the dollar amount and the verbiage in the question? Yes? Okay. Then, it's, alright, do we want, you know, do we support it as it is? If not, what don't we? And, and then if we need to take out the boilers and reallocate it, great. But I think we need to separate those two things at this point, or else we're gonna get bogged down. I'm open to saying no, but I, I think, especially if we, if it can be vague enough or we can still critique it a little bit here and there, that's it. And then it comes down to a vote, we vote on the question and the dollar amount, and then we vote on the project as it's
Okay.
Can I ask Bray a question? Did you, uh, put a number together for on full new pool?
Yeah, it goes in somewhere.
Seven.
Yeah.
I'd have to pull that back up, yeah.
And, and you would be comfortable putting it on as a second question, Kevin?
No, that's not what I would, what I would've done is allocated money differently and made pool part of the under seventeen million package. Based off of the, you know, the initial document we got with, they've had a lot of line items on it. I picked different things out of it and I had a different dollar allocation per each building and what X amount of dollars would address each building.
I agree, and I think we could also, um, it could also be more doable by getting that seven point eight million down, because I think it's possible to get that down a fair bit.
I, I think we're running into trouble if we do that.
I'm not in favor of second question, just to address the other part of your question.
Okay. Alright, thank you. So, um, I guess then on the eighteenth, we'll potentially look at voting on the scope.
Well, there's another proposal question coming up, there'll be more discussion of it.
No, I know, but I'm saying, regarding this, the list of potential projects, on the eighteenth, we can vote on if we're comfortable with the project's outline.
I don't even know if you actually have to even do that. I, I mean, however sixteen point one would go, you don't have to vote on items by, by, item by item. But, but I mean, the, the, the point of maybe a straw poll or whatever you wanna do as far as how comfortable are we with the list? Because ideally, to the public, the public's gonna wanna know, you just passed a referendum question, what's the scope? You can't really wave at that.
Exactly, okay. So then we'll leave this alone for now, um, and we'll focus on the, um, go from there. Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so much for that two minutes per page thing.
Yeah, right?
I said two hours. Yeah, you said two, you said two minutes per page, didn't you? So we, okay, so two hours, sure. I'm sure you could wrap this up. Alright, you got nine minutes and five seconds.
Do I?
This file is in your board folder. So, the next conversation, this is just a discussion, it's not necessarily an approval thing, but I think it's important to look at the framework, um, oh my gosh. Um, the framework for which a lot of the curriculum decisions and, um, that you will see coming up, but as we're moving forward, um, just wanted to share some of that with you. So one of the things that we've noticed, um, working with, um, our principals, Lynn, as we were looking at, what does our district offer in terms of programming sequences of courses that students can take? So, last month the board approved some experiential learning in terms of what that looks like for our students to take, some experiences. We know that our students can take advantage of, of youth options and all of that stuff. But when we're looking at our elective options for our students in the middle school, or looking at our options in the high school, in terms of looking at what's called a pathway for students, so they can say, "Hey, I'm really interested in this, and how do I get some depth into something?" Our courses and our programming is just not very organized, is the best way to put it, in terms of what we can offer. We're a high school of eight hundred students, so we have choices that we have to make, we have limitations. We can't offer everything to everybody. So we have to make some choices in terms of where are we gonna create a little bit of depth instead of just a smorgasbord of a little bit or, or some cohesiveness. And so, how do we start to create some pathways? And partly with our academic and career plans that are required by the state, the board passed that on last, um, spring, in terms of grades six through twelve. How do we now start to, to, um, sort of take all of our resources, whether it's staffing and programs, and programs and whatever it is, to try to create some pathways here at Whitnell? How many can we sustain for a high school our size? We look at area districts, they might specialize in this, students can start taking courses in middle school and high school, and by the time they're done, have really explored an area of a career pathway. We obviously can't offer everything. And so you'll hear a little bit later in our courses that we're offering, whatever it is, we can, we can't offer like, you know, twenty different elective options, whether it's business or, um, marketing or tech ed or whatever offering. We can't offer all of these electives. You know, for a high school of twenty-five hundred students, obviously you have enough to support classes. The resources do it, the staffing and doing that. So we've had a lot of what I would call random courses that just sit out there by themselves. They don't fit into any scope and sequence. And not that everything has to be like, linked to a career, but if students are interested in it, there has to be somewhat of a purpose right now. We have a seven-period school day, and so students don't have ten options in which they can try a little bit of everything. So, in where we're talking, working with both post-secondary institutions, whether it's the technical college, four-year universities, our local employers, all of those groups, and getting some feedback, we've decided to focus on three, what I would say, not that students can take things outside of it, but three pathways of where we can create a little bit of depth. So, this schematic that you see talks about K-five, what would students do, six, eight, and then nine, twelve. And so, the three areas, both based on, um, high-demand careers, options. You'll see a lot of what are called the one plus three for the universities, where students can take their first year in high school and move on. Cardinal Stritch, UW, Milwaukee Marquette just passed some of those agreements with M A T C in terms of the registered nurse program. There is going to be a huge shortage of nurses, and so there's a lot of those programs that look at that. So in terms of career pathways, you will see, um, health sciences, we decided to be one of those, and that's very broad. Please don't just think nurse and doctor here, there's a lot of different occupations that are, that are included in that. Computer science and information technology, again, we're not talking computer programming here, we're talking a wide range of skills, options, careers that can be taken across there. And then what's called manufacturing engineering, from a very broadest, broadest sense, what, things that are created. So in order to have, um, our students experience that and get into a pathway where they can have some of those options, we've had to sort of create some visuals, as, as is common in most school districts, where they have some pathways that students can focus on. So what you will see is in grades K-five, some of these options, we would ask our, um, our teachers to be able to do some pla, um, projects. They would look at some units in there, and maybe some after-school options. Maybe there's a Lego club, maybe there are some different things that students could do. We just did the Hour of Coding, that was sort of the statewide national initiative with our elementary schools last week. So what do we do at our elementary schools to start to give some exposure to this, through careers, through some units and that? And then what do we start doing at middle school, as we try to have some students take a look at what our options are in terms of our electives? So, we've started to talk with our middle school folks in terms of what electives are there outside of music and art. We have some tech ed, we have, um, you know, in terms of the other things, that's about it when students are starting to explore that, and a lot of other middle schools at least have something in which they can at least get some foundational pieces. In our middle school, grades six through eight, we're looking at, again, having teachers take some things that just might be a unit within a course. They might do a project related to some of these. And again, some of our after-school clubs, whether it's through robotics or whatever that we're doing to try to create some opportunities for students to explore a lot of these. In addition to that, we're looking at some coursework at the middle school. We know that we have a middle school, um, tech ed program right now, and you'll hear a little bit about this later, but there's not a correlation to where our high school program is. There is not what is called a scope and sequence, from the courses you take in middle school and how do they flow into high school. And it's really the only thing outside of music that has any scope and sequence. So there's a very big disconnect between middle school and high school in terms of progression. So, um, tonight you'll hear a lot of the high school coursework, we're hoping to bring back after, um, we come back from the holiday break, what does that mean for our middle school coursework? Because it's very, I would call it random right now in terms of what we're offering students in terms of their courses. And that becomes a scheduling issue when we're looking at middle school students and their, their, their day also. So at our nine twelves, where you really start to see these core, or these pathways take shape. So what we're looking at is what courses are we gonna offer in the high school related to these pathways? And for the most part, we have some computer science courses, information technology courses, manufacturing, engineering. What we'd be looking at eventually is what can we offer our students, either here at Whitnell or through some other options for coursework? There's some programs that continue to be added in the whole medical field, one-year certificates or two-year programs, home healthcare. There's, there's tons of different things between CNA options. And so, beyond what we would offer the coursework at Whitnell, you can see in, in blue here are some options for our students either through our consortium of districts. Um, there are dual enrollment academies through M A T C or youth options. Those are all opportunities that would be done coursework, but not done here at Whitnell, that we have either partnerships or opportunities for our students to take courses related to those. And then, um, at the top row there is what we would call some experiential learning in that. Students can take some service learning, co-op jobs, youth apprenticeships related to those pathways. So really trying to say, if I'm a student interested in that, like, where do I start? How do I get some interest? Leading them right into post-secondary. Because right now, it's, it's sort of unclear when you look at our course guide, when you look at what our options, like, where do you start and where does it take me, and what are my options when I graduate? So we're trying to create some more pathways, options, some visuals for parents and students, and some programs, making some decisions programming-wise, so we can take our resources there and make sure that the staff is where we need them to be instead of just a random class here and there. So this is just a visual discussion, um, as we look at what it is to help us guide our decisions around curriculum instead of just, well, that fills a void in a schedule this year, or this teacher has an hour that they aren't teaching something so they can teach something. But next year, that may or may not exist because we're just trying to fill that. And that's sort of been historically how we've done something, without a roadmap. So, we're trying to create a roadmap. We believe that these, um, career pathways, we can, as, as, from a high school our size, a school district our size, at least create some robust opportunities for students. But we can't be everything to everybody, and it doesn't mean that we're not gonna allow students to explore other careers or anything, or we're gonna put people in, in, you know, these really tight pathways. I don't want you to get that at all, but they're very broad categories when you look at them across the board. So, wanted to share that as we're still developing that, and, and it sort of will be the, you know, preface to some of the curriculum and course changes that you will see a little bit later tonight. So I entertain any questions that folks might have.
Any questions?
I'm just really happy we're doing something like this. This is one of the first things I mentioned to you when we, like, had our first sit-down, so, thank you.
Good, you're welcome. I think it'll give us some guidance, and I think we're, from counselors to teachers to administration, are happy to have some framework to, to work in. I think it'll help guide our decisions around resources between staffing, scheduling for students, programming, conversations with parents, directions for life after high school, all of those things. So just creating some roadmaps now, so. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Onto item five, discussion and future action. So, it's now eight-thirty. We have quite a few options under this, and then we still have closed session. So I just ask if we can consolidate the questions down, so we can try to get out, through this before midnight? Be great, so, um, try to stick with that, please. So first is Bray Architects Contract. Does anyone have any questions about the contract?
Okay, any comments you wanna add, Mike? Are we getting all that?
Lawyers went through it, attorneys went through it.
So we're good to go?
We're comfortable.
Okay, perfect. April twenty eighteen referendum question. Everyone's had a chance to review it, any questions or concerns about the question itself?
Like I said, we've set our stuff before, so.
Okay, and we're comfortable with the dollar amount? Obviously it could be sixteen one eight six now, if need be, but essentially in that under sixteen two, let's call it. We're all comfortable with that? You're not comfortable with under sixteen two? Okay. Okay, so then, we'll move on. So no other comments?
So the only thing, what you'll see is, if we're comfortable with how this question is phrased, what'll come next week are two resolutions, one in which to borrow not more than this number, and a second to go to referendum. So those are the two resolutions that you've seen as.
So, no one has any concerns with this? So yes, I think we're comfortable with the phrasing, as long as we make sure the dollar amount matches and we're good?
I could tell you why I'm not comfortable with the dollar amount, if you like.
I wanted to know if you were up or down, that was more or less my question.
Yeah, it's down, and to Mike's, by seven hundred and some thousand dollars because
Okay.
Uh, because of the boilers. I could support it if the boilers were on there. With boilers on there, I'm not supporting.
Okay.
And, and to Mike's point of, that's not necessarily how we have to spend the money for six months. We've had the discussion about, well, that doesn't have to necessarily go there. I know that if, if, unless we take that dollar amount out of the referendum, we're getting new boilers. And I'm not in favor of that, so I would support fifteen four.
Okay, okay. Hi.
So, Mike, any other direction you need?
Okay, thank you. See twenty seventeen eighteen Whitnell High School course changes.
Alright, so, I have quite the, uh, the packet here for you to, to review. To, to summarize, uh, as we, as we started looking at our, our different course offerings and, um, in lines with the, uh, and in lines with the different pathways that we're looking to create, we kind of addressed a couple of the different departments with either name changes, courses that have been in our course guide that just have not run and so truly just should be dropped, and then other courses that either are being moved and added or are just being added overall. The classes that we're looking to add overall really truly push the rigor for our students. And then also some of the changes here are in line with some equity changes that we feel are needed for our students to all be successful and not be tracked down or up just based on how their parent signs them up or how they do on a single test. So I open up, I guess, questions on each of these pieces. I can go through my department if you'd like. Bring Andrew up. He can sit with me.
He showed up and he's here for the long.
Name and address.
So I mean, I guess to kind of peruse through this department by department. Business, a lot of this is just transactional where we're looking at dropping two classes that haven't run for several years, renaming some courses that we currently offer. In the computer science, IT, the digital communications class, those are actually somewhat of a rename for a different media productions class that Andrew actually teaches. This would focus it a little bit because this is, as Lisa said, one of those classes that kind of floats out there by itself that was a journalism class at one point, then became a technology class and now is just, was sitting by itself. So we're trying to add that within the IT department. If you want to add anything.
No, I think it makes total sense to put that somewhere. I think historically kids haven't really known, like, well, what's the point of this class other than it sounds interesting? Now there's a path that it fits into. I think it makes a lot more sense for kids to choose it purposefully rather than, I just need to take something.
In English, we're looking at some changes in English nine. We'll get into that a little bit further as we get down to F and G in the line items. But then as well, we're looking at adding AP Language class. Right now we have a Pi class, which is through UW-Whitewater, a Pi 101 class for students, that's an additional three-hundred-and-thirty dollars that they have to pay to UW-Whitewater to earn those credits. AP Language is a class that is fairly universally transferred. If a student gets a three, four, or five on that AP class and it's an eighty-eight-dollar test at that point.
And that would serve the same purpose as the Pi course?
Correct.
Actually more. Right now the Pi class serves one, so a freshman English composition is typically a five-credit. In the university, it's typically a five-credit composition. The Pi class right now is a semester class and serves one of those pieces of their freshman required English, not both of them. You'll find the AP Language class across, I mean, the country serves as if they get a three, four, or five. And again, the more elite ones, you may have to look at a four or five definitely, but it serves as that entire what's called five-credit chunk of it. So a little bit different in terms of that.
What's Pi stand for?
I mean, Principles in English?
Okay.
Yeah.
Principles in English. Guys get so used to it, I forget.
Partners in Engineering.
It's the same title for all courses that are dual.
Yeah, a couple, like Ash, Pash has some and Green Bay and Whitewater have these partnerships with high schools. Not all universities do, but they created a series of classes, so it would be easily transferable. I guess comparables to the AP, but you have a transcript from their institution as compared to it.
Didn't we recently initiate a bunch of that, like in the last three years? The Pi.
Jackie, do you know what year it was?
I don't know what year it was, but over the last five years.
As we move up then towards English twelve, the idea with English twelve class, currently there are a series of half-credit courses, British Lit, short stories, creative writing, things of that nature. We would look to kind of combine some of those courses into nine-week sessions kind of based off of some of the feedback we've gotten on the seminar courses that we're running, the nine-week sessions to offer all students a taste of British Lit. You know, for me, when I see the course title, British Lit, I would say, nope, no, thank you, that's not for me. But perhaps if I was in the English twelve class and I had those opportunities to read the Shakespeare or the literature that they offer with that, I might actually find a little more value and interest in that. So really, again, combining classes into just the single English twelve credit for students. Then Pi Communications, that's another UW-Whitewater class that we offer. We look to add a M A T C transcribed class to meet this need. As you see here then, there's Communication Skills one and two. So those are M A T C level courses. So if a student is looking to go for that associate's degree, that would be a course that they would be required to take as a M A T C student as well. So now it gives them that offer as a high school student. Nice piece with that is no longer do they have to pay the three-hundred-and-thirty dollars for the course. It is transcribed through M A T C, so there is no course fee for students.
What do you mean by transcribed?
What that means is that we have our teacher that is essentially certified by M A T C to teach the class.
Sort of like an AP.
Very similar to AP.
Okay, thank you.
As we move into Science Department, again, for the ninth-grade biology, we're looking at some equity pieces here and we'll get into that a little bit further as well with the freshman academy. Social Studies, I'll let you take over Social Studies if you'd like.
Sure. Yeah, so we're looking at changing specifically freshman-level Social Studies by dropping the Modern World class and replacing it with the Global Studies, which seems kind of like a name change. But the idea behind this is to focus a little bit more on what's happening in the real world today and rather than taking this class as what it historically has been, which is a, let's go through modern global history and then bring it to today. Let's switch it around a little bit and what's going on right now and how can we understand some of those things through both historical, geographic, civics, and economic concepts? So it's just really flipping that class a little bit on its head. Still incorporating aspects of history in it, but really focusing on how do you get engaged in what's going on in the world today? AP World, kind of as a result of that, would get dropped. If we're looking at a course that for freshmen at an AP level would be realistic for them and appropriate for them, it's the AP Human Geography class. It's a little bit more approachable than AP World and AP US in the writing skills that they're looking for. And the benefit of that class is regardless of what a kid is taking freshman year, they're getting that global geographic, modern component to it. The reason why we've changed some of these things is there's completely different outcomes for kids in an AP track in the Social Studies Department and a non-AP track. And they could be coming out of Whitnell with drastically different social science kind of skills. And this really evens that out at both levels with the kids. So freshman year, we'd be looking at that global geographically-minded coursework regardless of what level they're looking at. We're also looking at changing, I don't know how much in-depth you want me to go through here because like that little map isn't in here. But we're also looking at the sophomore level. Is it in there, it's just not at the page I'm looking at?
Correct.
At the sophomore level, we would still have the modern US, but we would look at that as a history-specific course, as just a semester with the civics class, then the half-credit, the civics class being the second semester of that. And the benefit to that is, and we've talked a lot about this as a department, is we typically have kids coming out of here hopefully good historians, not really good at the other things that make for a well-rounded citizen. So if we incorporate both modern US history and civics and that civics class we agreed would have.
Jack, could you go to page thirty-three in the agenda so it's easier? From a visual to align with what, yeah, sorry.
It's easier to visually look at it than this.
So it's on page thirty-three, yeah, sorry.
There it is. So for grade ten, it's still really a, it's still a year of history when you get down to it. But when we're teaching that civics class, we're looking at how have people within the last ten, twenty years been civically engaged in our country? So there's still that aspect of modern history that would be incorporated within that class. Then AP US History would be the grade ten offering. So again, regardless of which pathway they're on, they're getting US history material there for once. Eleventh grade, we'd be looking a little later than next year, offering AP Government and Politics and then with that, an Economics class. We, oh, I misspoke, didn't I? I did, sorry.
But that was the conversation deciding what we were.
Yeah, there was a conversation about where we put that civics class. So I misspoke a little bit. The modern US history half-credit, they would then in sophomore year have an option of taking any of those electives that you see at the bottom to kind of explore something different than history. If they're on that path of non-AP classes, then in eleventh grade, they would take both civics and economics. And in that civics class, we did come to an agreement as a department that the planning of that class would incorporate some United States historical aspects to it. And then the AP offering would be AP Government and Politics. So regardless of that pathway, again, they're getting that civics component within it. And then grade twelve, after they've met their requirements for credits, they would have the ability to take more electives, AP offerings, what have you. I think I hit all of those. Yeah. The Pi class would go.
Yep.
Yeah.
The only thing I would say, the impetus around the civics piece, and I think it was on the cover of the proposal, I just wanted to point out is that when reviewing the state statutes and looking that the district offers something in state and local government and talking with the department, not really feeling that the history class in and of itself was doing that state and local government justice in terms of that. And if you look at the five areas of the standards under Social Studies, there is one that is specific to political and governance outside of history. So this gives that blend and really feeling that we're doing our civic duty by requiring a civics course in terms of balancing that out. But yet, as I think Andrew pointed out, there is still some US, you can't separate it, but by having that specifically, you really feel like there's some opportunities for our students to realize that they're covering civics within that context.
Yep, and then to Andrew's point as well, the special ed two-oh-five Pi class, this is additional, like kind of standalone class. We still have AP Psych and regular semester of Intro to Psych in there, but this is a class that as well costs a student additional money and it's not really a class that aligns with any other pathway that we have. The tech ed department really has a total revamp of things.
Sorry, can I have a question just a real quick? So usually now, is AP US History, is that a junior or senior elective course? Because I know, I don't know how long it's been, I'm just, no, I understand it there, but I'm just, I'm curious because I know in the past, way back when, because it was all based off of, you need to have these writing skills down, that's why we're going to make you take it later. Have we just changed the curriculum so that it's, or not the curriculum, but the organization of classes and such that it's going to be just as, not easy to go through the class, but the same level of skill needed even though they're now taking a grade ten versus possibly later?
Those recommendations were in those quite a few years ago, so they could take it and who was ready to take it when they normally wouldn't take it US.
Yeah, I guess that's my question though, but that's not a concern anymore where I know it used to be, oh, you better have your writing otherwise because we don't think you're a writing type of thing, yeah.
No. I think there's still a concern that like, yeah, your writing skills need to be there, but we can hit that by grade ten.
Okay, good, that's, yeah, that's.
The thing that we're into right now at Whitnell is we offer regular US at a freshman level, which the unfortunate problem with that is then like are freshmen going to take AP US? That's not developmentally appropriate for them.
Sorry to cut you off.
Currently, just to clarify, currently A Push is taken by students at what grade?
Well, it's not right now.
We don't offer it this year.
Traditionally, it's been a sophomore slash junior.
Yeah, that's what I was speaking to.
So that's not too much of a change, should it run?
No, no.
She's using A Push like you're a student.
Sorry.
Yeah, like, I mean, even if you go way, way back.
I won't call Appcap that either for the two-year.
When I took A Push, I was a sophomore. It really traditionally is a sophomore-level class. Yeah.
Thanks.
Can you speak English for those of us that didn't go here and might be older than?
AP US History is typically from our AP kids, but that, just like AP Government and Politics is called Appcap.
I haven't heard that one.
I haven't heard that one either.
Yep, so then Technology Engineering Department, total redo of those courses. Currently, we offer a series of half-credit courses that do not have any prerequisites or subsequent classes thereafter. They all truly are standalone classes. So what we would do is look to have students start off in an Intro to Design class. This class would really focus on the design process, provide that foundation for our students.
Comment page.
This would be a class similar to what would happen at the middle school level and to allude to Lisa's point. A student who perhaps took the required coursework at the middle school could opt out of this class if they demonstrated their skills and jump into a Building Trades, Manufacturing, or Engineering course. But for those students who are new to us that perhaps haven't taken a Engineering or Intro class, this would be the Intro class that all students would be recommended for. Building Trades really would be focused around a lot of those construction-type skills that we would have. Manufacturing really looks at some of the high-tech manufacturing components. We're not talking the dingy and dirty shop classes. When we talk about those things, we're talking about, you know, the laser printers and things of that nature. And then the Engineering Drawing classes. The goal is to eventually get those to be classes that could be transcribed at the college level, looking at specifically SolidWorks or a CAD type of coursework there. And then finally on here is, like I mentioned, the Media Production class. That's the drop slash rename of the two IT classes, Digital Communications one and two. So in a nutshell, that's, those are the changes.
No changes to, or did I miss it, to the Chemistry Biology? I mean, there are some things mentioned there, but you didn't cover that chart.
Oh, sorry if I passed over that. In the ninth-grade Biology.
Page forty.
Yep, we can talk further about that with the ninth-grade Academy, but the idea with that is we currently in the science classes have three levels of classes. We have a Concepts class, which is predominantly special ed students or students who don't test well into the course. We have the Regular Biology class, which is for most students, and then the Honors Biology class, which is for students who have tested, based on their eighth-grade placement test, into that test or through parent opt-in. The content that's taught in Regular Biology and Honors Biology is the same. They have the same labs, they have the same tests. The idea with the honors, however, is that they are able to provide a little more depth in their instruction because it's an honors-level class. It becomes difficult to, I guess, define that rigor when the, you know, lab expectations are kind of the same for a regular class and honors class and we're offering grade weighting for that. So when we get to G and we talk about honors program, hopefully we can use that as kind of our case example. So anything else on the course changes?
How long had there been just the two programming classes? Do you know when we switched? Because I know they used to have three. Or are they all condensed into the two now?
We have additional computer science classes beyond those two.
Yeah, I was just kind of extending it from what I read.
And those would still exist?
Yeah.
So what this is doing is it's more so giving a home to that miscellaneous Media Production class.
Yeah.
We would still have the AP Computer Science and Computer Science classes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not sure which page that's on, but. Believe it is. It's not showing me page numbers here.
That's all right.
There we go. It's a Mac.
I think it was just last year we added the AP Computer Science.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I believe so.
I think, Kevin, it was the year prior to that, though, that the new course design and the Computer Science classes came forward.
Thanks. So was there, I missed it, was there any proposal changing that stuff or leaving it?
The computer programming classes all stay the same.
So that table is, has no, would change from today?
The only thing added onto that table really is the Digital Communications one and Digital Communications two classes.
Down bottom, okay.
Just giving them a home, so they're not in their own department as they are right now.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So moving on to D, Policy fifty-four sixty graduation requirements.
Oh, yeah, okay, sure.
Sorry, Mr. Baum, you hooked. You can't have, he's got you now, man. He's going to take the wheels off you.
So within our graduation requirements, with some of these proposed changes, would result in some transactional changes, but also some other changes in structure for things. So the change for English would be that a student could take English eleven or the AP Language class. In Social Studies, that, as Andrew described, is quite a bit more of a change of things. An additional piece tied to that is that currently, a student is required to either take Economics or Personal Finance, which we are saying meets their financial literacy requirement. With this, as we delved into this, the change for the class of twenty twenty and beyond, there was the additional half-credit added for those students to equal up to twenty-four credits total. As we looked at that, the language didn't quite spell out exactly what we were, I guess, anticipating with that, and there was some questions about, can a student take Economics and have it count both as their Social Studies credit as well as their personal finance or financial literacy requirement? And so with that, we just updated that language to identify that a student who takes Personal Finance to meet the financial literacy requirement will then only need eight and a half elective credits as opposed to nine elective credits versus if they took the Economics class or AP Economics, that would be considered their point five credit for that category. So it just cleans up that language to spell it out a little bit better for our students. Still the same number of overall course credit requirements for Class of twenty twenty and beyond, just cleans up that language.
So if you recall about a year ago, Jackie and I brought forward this same board policy, and that was because there was an error caught in terms of when it was brought before, the total number of credits, if you remember that last year, it had twenty-four for everybody, and it needed to be only twenty-three and a half until the class of twenty twenty, because otherwise we were graduating students, giving them a diploma and not meeting our board policies, starting with the class of twenty sixteen. So we fixed that last December to make sure that when the change was made prior to that, that it wasn't twenty-four for everybody, because the twenty-four credits started with this year's sophomore class. So when the last, when we brought this policy forward to the board last year, that was the only thing that was changed. We didn't change any of the other stuff related to that, just to clarify what should have been done there. So we're not changing the credits here, but I would say the biggest change was with that Social Studies piece, and in talking with Andrew and the counselors and that, not really understanding, because the words, if you look on the pages before this, talk about that if I took Economics, it says cannot be counted as Social Studies. If a student is taking AP Economics, this can't count as Social Studies. That was not making sense to any of us. Like, why would you take AP Economics? And you can't count it for Social Studies at high school, but clearly universities are going to count that as a Social Studies class. It wasn't making sense to any of us here, and just hearing some history, just not sure that it was maybe vetted through the way that it needed to be when it was there. So if you're taking that, that would meet that Personal Finance piece of it clearly, but why would we not count it as Social Studies because it clearly is? But obviously, we can't take the business class and count it towards Social Studies. So it just cleaned that up for us because it was still very fuzzy to Social Studies Department, counselors, all of us to try to figure it out.
There was a weird loophole that kids could get in. If they took the Personal Finance class and enjoyed it and then wanted to take Econ later, by way of how it was written, it would count through nothing. So, like, it's just awkward.
What was that extra half-credit? I can't remember where we added that.
Well, we think it has to do, and we've talked with Jackie, we think it has to do with how that change was made with the Economics, Personal Finance. So what in theory, what it was doing to go from twenty-three and a half to twenty-four was really saying that now kids needed three and a half Social Studies credit, where we don't think that that would have, that shouldn't have been the overall intent. It should have been, if you take Personal Finance to meet the financial literacy, you still have to take three Social Studies credits. But if you choose to take Econ, then you can sort of count it, but the way that it was worded would have not allowed that for students.
So you're talking about going back to twenty-three and a half?
No, we're keeping the twenty-four, because we think in a, kids could take twenty-eight right now, right? So that's a four-credit buffer, which is still a big enough buffer. So if you take your, if you take Personal Finance, you're still leaving room for eight and a half electives, where if it was twenty-three and a half, you would have cut off those electives, because you still intend to take the Social Studies. So it just gives them more choices.
So we have the credits, but they have, we have the credit requirements, but they have more, I don't think, it's tough to follow.
Depends on which pathway you choose. You choose the Social Studies pathway, then you have more room for electives, which could be in a content area, or if you choose the Personal Finance, you still need to fulfill those three credits in Social Studies, because Personal Finance will fall under an elective. And again, as we move toward more rigor, as Charlie's talked about, we're really encouraging our kids to take what's called a four-by-four, anyway, four years of all of our four core content areas. And so we want that regardless in terms of that, but that's where the part of, if one of my classes that I was going to take in Social Studies was AP Econ, it was, the board policy wasn't allowing me to count that as, but yet my university or acceptance would count that as Social Studies, so.
So I have a question on, towards the bottom of page forty-eight, where it talks about a student may be eligible to complete, and I understand this isn't a policy, but I want to know if there's some legality reason, so one of the, they have to meet all of their criteria in order to, in lieu of a half-credit of PE, they have to meet all the criteria. And A would be successfully complete entire season in WIA, high school sanctioned activity, school or school-based athletic club prior to the start of his or senior year. B, student throughout the entire season remains a good standing academically eligible and violates no ten of the Athletic Code. C, the coach advises the activity and high school athletic director verifies the high school principal that the student has satisfied the above criteria. So my question is, as far as A goes, is there some reason why we don't include sports outside of the school, whether it's WIA, so outside of WIA and club? Because you think with an affidavit, letter from the coach, you know, signatures from parents, that kind of thing.
Sure.
That you should be, how about photos from the competitions, you know, that you should be able to verify that they're doing several hours of athletics outside of school just because it doesn't qualify as, count as WIA or club? Why is that not?
Sure. So first of all, this board passed that policy prior to any of us here. First of all, that's a board policy, a local decision when the state law was passed five years ago, any local board could decide to make that a board policy or not. This board must have decided to make that at that time in the recommendation forward. Second, I would say, I don't know if any Wisconsin school district that allows anything but WIA sports as the exception, and I'm guessing, John, having talked to many of them, and what?
Or club.
What?
Or club, because we allow club.
School club.
School club. School club.
Right, I'm sorry, that's what I meant, a school club, right.
Archery, some districts have, whatever those are. And I think it just has to do with the record-keeping process of that in terms of what that is, in terms of eligibility also that requires some of that stuff. I can just tell you that there's no district that is doing that. I don't have any other solid evidence from that, other than probably the logistics of following that through and becoming the gatekeeper of what is or what isn't. That's probably, I mean, valid or not, that's just the reason that most districts have it. I'm not saying.
So I appreciate what you're saying about other districts, however, we are our own district. So my question would be, is there anything that, any legality that would preclude us from including something like a club sport that's outside of WIA or school?
It's a local board decision, so there's nothing legally that would.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions about this topic? Charlie, do you have any other comments you want to make about it?
No.
Okay, thank you. On to E, Whitnell High School's schedule.
Okay. If you'd like, you can stay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for sticking around. Thank you very much.
So you've heard me talk a little bit about some of the survey data that was collected as well as some other data collected around our schedule. As we continue down our pathway of personalizing learning and creating a schedule that meets the needs of our students, we're looking at some modifications to our current schedule. We'd like to break the schedule up into a schedule for our tenth through twelfth graders. These students would have still a traditional seven-period day, as we currently have. We look to add what we're calling Falcon Time, which is a thirty-minute, end-of-the-day intervention enrichment period, advisory period for our students to provide some of that social-emotional support, homeroom, if you will. It offers us time to have a little bit of flexibility with our students, that they can see teachers if they needed. Right now, with the zero-hour timeframe, whether it be due to busing, breakfast, other aspects, not every student is able to meet with a teacher during that time. So this would be the time that we dedicate out for that. The changes that have to occur for that, we look to change fifty-minute class periods down to forty-eight minutes and our passing time from five minutes to four minutes. Four minutes, contrary to any student's belief, is more than enough time to get from one side of the building to the other side and then back again.
And use the bathroom?
And use the bathroom, yep. So, you know, the four-minute passing time, we've done four-minute passing times during our homecoming schedules, assembly schedules, changes to that nature, and students are able to get the class on time without an issue during four minutes. We would then have two lunch periods, so the fifth hour class right now is split for some students, where they may have a class that they go to for twenty-five minutes lunch, then another twenty-five minute class. That would go away for tenth through twelfth graders. They would have that opportunity to go to lunch and then a class, or go to class and then a lunch. The biggest change here for us comes then with the ninth grade. And as I get into some of the more logistics of the ninth grade academy, the freshman academy, the schedule, the way this would look for our ninth graders, periods one, two, three, and seven would still align with the tenth through twelve schedule. So if a student is in a Spanish class, math class, music class, that perhaps has mixed grade levels, that's when those classes would exist. During what we're calling this flexible core block of time, we would have three different, three and a half credits to be obtained during that three-class period block of time. They would have their Biology, their English, their Social Studies, and their Health classes that would meet during those times. Within that block of time, there's the flexibility provided then to the teachers to say, perhaps in Biology, my lesson today doesn't fit within a fifty-minute period. I need sixty minutes to complete this lab. Teachers then have that flexibility to decide amongst themselves how to adjust their day and their schedule for that. So no longer are we bound by a fifty-minute bell-to-bell for those students. We also gain some efficiencies with having some coursework that overlaps. So a question of, how do you feed three billion people, for example? Well, is that a Social Studies question, a Biology question, a Health question? Now students can have those types of questions that cover multiple disciplines and, you know, accomplish that within that block of time as opposed to having to answer those questions separately outside. They get a different perspective, different teachers for that matter. We also know there's a lot of efficiencies with Health and Biology, so a lot of the concepts that students have in Health class, they're already covering Biology, but perhaps need a different spin on it during that conversation from the Health teacher versus the Biology teacher. What this allows us then to do is creates an additional half-credit of elective for our ninth graders to take. We know our ninth graders struggle with the opportunity to have additional coursework, that perhaps they are very restricted in what they can take. This offers an extra half-credit for them. As well, so the Falcon Time piece with that, we do have students who take seven full classes and don't have that study hall period. This offers that study hall period for all students, so they can get the extra help, ask those questions before they go home and attempt to, you know, do their calculus questions and, you know, ask each of you.
Me.
How do I do this? They can ask those questions before they walk out the door. So.
Required to go to Falcon Time?
So we would have it required for, I could imagine for a senior perhaps who at least the qualifications for open campus, that they would have that time to leave. Ideally, as we look at our pathways and we've got students doing more service learning opportunities, where they're doing an apprenticeship, apprenticeship, youth options-type course, that that's an opportunity for them to have an extra half hour gained in their day to be able to be outside the building doing something productive. I'm not about releasing students just to go home.
Yeah.
If the release time is purposeful, absolutely. If they're going and doing some sort of volunteering, they're helping out at the middle school or the elementary school, wonderful, that's ideal for them.
Aside from the apprenticeship, I know we kind of took it out of the co-op capability, but if someone just works a regular job, is that going to be an option?
If they internship, no.
So they can start. Either way, it's going to count? Good, so they can start at two-thirty maybe?
Correct.
Awesome.
And then the kids that weren't showing up for the first zero-hour are captured.
Correct. So that's where some of the flexibility can come in. We can offer some incentive time for students. You know, we understand that Friday afternoon, you know, there may be diminishing returns for some students, and, you know, perhaps the students that qualify can have some opportunity for some enrichment and some activities during that time. We've had the conversation that it'd be ideal to bring in a speaker during that time and have a symposium, bring someone in from Medical College of Wisconsin if students are interested in the health pathways. What does it actually mean to be in a health field career that is not a nurse or doctor? So have individuals come in during that time, open the theater up for those conversations.
Questions? Okay, and then F was the freshman academy. Any questions on that? Because, or do you want to go more in depth before we get to that?
No, there's a sample student schedule on there, just gives a kind of a perspective of what that would look like. To one more point with that, the efficiency with the lunch periods as well, we still have a cafeteria that's the exact same size, we still would need to have three lunch periods to serve students. Our lunch, the student numbers in lunch would be relatively the same to what we've had this year as well as previous years, so we're looking at very, very few added to the tenth through twelfth grade lunch. Ninth graders would have their own lunch by themselves during that time. As well, offers us some opportunity to help instruct what proper behavior looks like in the cafeteria for ninth graders prior to them, you know, becoming tenth through twelfth graders.
Great. Any questions on the freshman academy?
Actually, my question applies to both E and F, which is why we didn't.
Sure.
I wanted to have a few questions. I wonder if you could expand on the thoughts and the things that it affects by doing this? For example, we've talked in the past about there are a number of kids that rely on breakfast here, and those kids have to get here, so if you lose zero hour, the number of concerns are maybe thirty minutes in the afternoon at the end of the day is not enough time to make up a test or for the student to get the extra help needed, where in the morning maybe it's more, I don't know. Some kids may need that time if they, if they're on the bus, maybe they Some kids may need that time, if they, if they're on the bus, maybe they need that time to get their motor running in the morning, because as we know, high schoolers tend to, granted, we're bringing them in earlier by the bus, but maybe those kids are more geared up to get started. So, there are some advantages to zero, to having that 7:00 AM part of it.
Yep. So, the teacher day would still be seven to three, and an efficiency we also gain with this, currently, there is common planning time for an entire department. Perhaps common planning time for a biology teacher and the chemistry teacher is not needed. And so, that zero-hour time can be a time when they can have their department meetings, and we can gain some efficiencies where biology still has common planning time, chemistry still has common planning time, but they don't have common planning time together, biology and chemistry. So, the 7:00, the 7:00 AM to 7:45 timeframe still would be available for students by appointment to come in for that extra help, test makeup, whatnot. Still be a time that we would have clubs and activities happening. So, we still would have students in the building during that time. The change with the requirement for capturing those students that need the, you know, intervention moves to the end of the day, as well, you know, to the point of students eating breakfast. With the buses, we anticipate that students would still be dropped off at, you know, 7:30, 7:35, in that range of time. Most of our students have a grab-and-go breakfast as it is. I recognize that in our lunch cafeteria, it takes our food service about seven minutes to get all students through the lunch line. They're very quick, very efficient, so the change would have to be that teachers perhaps would have to be a little more flexible at 7:45 to understand that there may be students still walking in with, you know, a bowl of tater tots, and that they need to be finishing those up prior to entering their door, but have a little more flexibility with that for the breakfast purposes. I don't anticipate it changing the number of students who need breakfast that will still ride the bus or be dropped off in time to sit and eat breakfast.
So, that they would be bussed with the middle schoolers like they are in the afternoons now?
Correct, correct. So, we currently have three routes. We have a high school route, middle school route, and an elementary school route in the morning. Combining the middle school and high school routes would offer some efficiencies with that, a slight cost savings from what we understand from projected numbers. And our students already ride the buses in the afternoon, so it would just be the same routes, morning and evening. Students could have a little bit of extra time in the morning to sleep in now. If they do ride the bus, you know, we figured about half-hour extra would, you know, would be the pickup time, a half-hour later would be the pickup time.
Now, they wouldn't need planning time as a department every morning at seven, right? It would just be like?
Correct. So, currently, Thursdays are primarily a day that departments have their all-department meetings, so that could continue, or it could be spread out, you know, perhaps Mondays are science and math, Tuesdays are English and social studies, you know, can be.
Would teachers still be expected to make themselves available if they are not in their planning, if they don't, if it's not the day for their planning meeting, they still be expected to make themselves available for a student that wanted some extra help at seven?
Yep, but it would be based on appointment. We do have some teachers, you know, Mr. Bowman, for example, who is involved in several clubs and activities, and so that 7:00 AM time as it is now, he's very limited on his time that he's able to meet with students. So, really, his schedule wouldn't change very much. He would just be now more available in the afternoon to see students and have additional time now for extra help.
But there is expectation, there would be still an expectation that the teacher doesn't have some other obligation, that they make themselves available at seven for students?
Yep. I mean, that 7:00 AM to 7:45 is professional time for teachers. Some of it will be, you know, dictated based on meetings or, you know, groups that need to meet during that time, but, yeah, if a teacher, for example, does not have a club or does not have a meeting that they need to go to, that, yes, they can have teach, have students come and make up tests, get extra help, whatever the case may be.
Are there that many, with the exception of the, of the planning times, of the, of the department meetings, are there, because those aren't going on right now at seven, right? So, those are?
Some are, so special ed does theirs during that time.
Okay, but most of the other departments don't, am I?
Most of the other departments have it during the school day.
So, with the exception of that, are there that many other obligations teachers have now during seven, during zero hour?
Yep, so monthly, we have an all-staff meeting. We have RTI committees, we have behavioral committees, we have different committees in the past to look at schedule, things of that nature, building leadership team. So, there are several committees and other activities that the school has teachers doing on top of the clubs and activities. We have teachers who do Student Senate, National Honor Society, Science Club, plethora of clubs and activities, DECA. This would be the time that they would all be able to meet. We also have some classes that do run during that time, so a jazz band runs during that time. So, we would have some teachers who would also be teaching a class at that time. FIAD perhaps could run a course at that time as well, if needed, a strength and conditioning type course. Offers a little more flexibility in our day.
So, my concern is that now students, to some degree or another, have, if they need busing, they have an avenue with which to get to school, and they may be able to seek help from a teacher, or clarification or something from a teacher, maybe, depending on all the obligations that they already have, before school, but how much focused are they going to be in the last 30 minutes of school? Or maybe a job gets in the way and they can't do that? Or what about, like, right now, a teacher can say, "You need to be here at zero hour", you know, but how can they do that if a student's got an internship?
Yep.
Which effectively would be an internship during zero hour, which is actually seven.
So, zero hour would not be required for any student. So, we will no longer say students have to be here, because based on the survey data, based on the information from parents and students, that's a time that's not well-respected and not well-used for that purpose. The Falcon Time would be that time that we would say, "If you need academic support, that comes first and foremost over your internship. While you are getting credit for that internship, you know, if you are not maintaining certain criteria to pass a class, does you no good to go to pick and save and, you know, get your internship? You've got to pass math. That's graduation requirement."
Sure, but how does that work on a, on a daily basis where, you know, the pick and save is scheduled, this person to be there on this internship?
It's, it's a case-by-case basis, and my expectation for my teachers would be to pick up the phone, call that parent, have that conversation, that, you know, "John is failing my math class, and I expect him to be here at 7:00 AM", because that's the only time that works, if he has to leave, you know, at 2:30 to go to an internship. And then that's a conversation with the parent, and students and parents have to make choices.
Great. I'm not trying to monopolize the conversation, but I don't see anybody else with any, I have one last thing. Anybody? You all right? Okay, so, slightly different subject, when you talk about borrowing minutes from one class to the next, and they can do some interrelated things and that kind of stuff. Why do it that way versus one of these, these newer things we've been exposed to, such as during certain units, teachers from different subjects getting together and co-teaching? So, now they have two periods together, and they can, they can reinforce each other's material together, rather than, "I need another five minutes today, and you can have another 10 minutes tomorrow", and that kind of stuff. So, why not do more of a co-teaching type of a plan on certain units?
Yep, and that's one of the components that the teachers have talked about doing, is having those big questions to ask and answer, and having that opportunity that they are all working together. You know, offering that, if we have a speaker come in, so if we're, if we're having, let's go down the thread of that, you know, how to fill, how to feed 3 billion people. Let's say we bring a farmer in. Farmer has a conversation, students are able to ask those questions, you know, makes sense to have that in the auditorium and have, you know, 100 students sitting there and listening to that at any one given point in time. You now have, you know, three teachers, four teachers in that room with those 100 students listening to the speaker. They're able to add and, you know, prompt and do what they need to do during that time, and it's combined time. It doesn't have to be in these isolated chambers anymore. And so, really, we have in that block of time allows the teachers that flexibility to make those choices, and not have a bell dictate when they have to move or not move.
Great. Thanks very much, Charlie. Appreciate it.
Okay, on to G, the honors program.
So, the, Lisa feels very jumping at any time you're at this. So, and we alluded to a little bit with the biology and English classes in particular. With biology, for example, in honors biology class right now, it's hard to identify that rigor is something that is what we would expect and want for our students. It's not transferable and comparable necessarily to an honors class at, you know, a MPS school or a, you know, New Berlin school for that matter. And so, we would have to, you know, identify internally what our expectations are with that. As well with honors within the freshman academy, we see that opportunity to have the different groupings and opportunities for our students, but then offer the honors program as that supplement. So, the opportunity for students to demonstrate that above and beyond learning, that depth and rigor of their learning, and really focus on, you know, the learning aspect of things, not the fact that they are in a class monickered honors, and that the content that they're learning may be the same as what is in a regular class at that point. So, this is something that we'd look to start with our ninth graders and then roll up with the class of 2022, as we move on to, as we move on to 10th, 11th, 12th grade. With that, it would have a set of criteria for our students, which would then, we would anticipate would include some AP classes and some other coursework that we are able to moniker as truly honors level, and identify those students well as a ninth grader, as opposed to identifying them based on a single test that they take in eighth grade.
So, I think this, this has been a conversation between Lynn, Charlie, and I in terms of that coming out of our gifted program to some extent. I don't want you to think that this is just a gifted program in and of itself, but talking about that, I think it's come out of our data analysis this year that our high school teachers have done. Not that they haven't done any before, but a little bit more in-depth in looking at some of our students who are in honors classes who are, who might, who are also scheduled to be in intervention, because they aren't even proficient in some of those scores, because of how they get placed in an honors class. So, we have some honors English nine students who actually aren't proficient based on their forward exam score. So, some disconnect of how students are getting placed and what that is. And I think as Charlie said, you can monitor an AP course, because it's got to be pretty prescriptive in order for, to students to prepare for that outcome. Different schools and whatever, you could put an honors label on anything, and who is, who is really monitoring what it means to be honors? And so, we really wanted to make sure, and as we've heard, that, you know, some of the classes within honors designation, there isn't that much of a differentiator between it, and so we really needed to make sure that it is. So, the transition from eighth to ninth grade and getting them into high school and really making sure that that's the place for them, when you get to the 10th grade, you start to see those classes start to be a little bit more robust. We're not sure at the ninth-grade level that some of those students are actually being placed correctly. We know at the university level, there are honors programs, and so this gives an opportunity to say, "Well, maybe I want honors biology, maybe not honors English nine and all of that", but really approaching it more as they do with this overlay on top of everything they're doing, allowing a student to get more in-depth into one topic, listening to seminars, speakers, symposium, really understand where that is, and working with like-minded students in terms of where they need some of those challenges academically to be able to meet that need. So, in terms of what that looks like and what it will continue to build, we'll take that feedback from teachers and to continue to talk about that, students' parents as we build with the sophomore, junior, senior level. But this would be something that would be indicated on their transcripts, that they were part of the honors program in that year, but not awarded separate credits, if you will. So, in terms of students wanting that designation, and I think we'll figure out by the time the current eighth graders become seniors, if they've been part of this program, whether there's some special designation at graduation to say that they were part of an honors program, if you will. So, we think it sort of elevates it, instead of, again, this randomness of an honors class here or there, that there's really sort of some teeth behind it, or that it substantiated sort of the level of what we're trying to do, and being able to monitor that a little bit better. So, that's really the intent behind it, I guess, meeting a couple of different needs across the board.
Okay, any questions?
So, would it reflect on a transcript that they were in an honors or an AP class?
Mm-hmm.
But you're talking about the additional notation would be part of an honors program?
Correct.
Yep.
And to that end, the biology, the honors biology that you're talking about dropping, because the, the lab is the same?
Mm-hmm.
Why can't they do a more in-depth lab for those kids versus, because there were pages and pages of the social studies and the finance and that kind of stuff where they're enhancing it, but in the biology thing, well, the labs are the same, so let's drop it? I don't understand that.
Um, well, so, the three levels that we see in biology, really, it comes down to an equity piece as well, and to Lisa's point, you know, if in an honors English class, which has several tests and, you know, benchmarks to it, we recognize that we have students who are not placed correctly with that. This allows us to get to know our students really well. It also allows us to then have those students who, you know, want that challenge, want that next level of honors, to demonstrate that with that overlay. And so, it's no longer that, you know, the labs have to be different. The lab still can be the same, which is appropriate and fine, because it still has a good level of rigor, but it now adds that overlay to provide more depth into what they're doing. And so, it doesn't have to be a separate curriculum, because it's honors monickered. It truly can be that depth that we expect out of students. And, you know, perhaps we have students right now who are more science-minded, and so they would want to be in the honors program for science, but not so much for English, and that's okay. That's, you know, that's something that they can apply for and be part of, and not have, not have the tracking of being in all honors classes.
I can appreciate that, but what you're talking about doing is dropping honors biology. From a, from a few items ago, you're talking about dropping honors biology, and I don't see that, how that is consistent with.
We're also talking about dropping the honors English nine, dropping the concepts of biology, and dropping the concepts of English. So, dropping the tracking of students that occurs based off of an arbitrary placement test that they take in eighth grade. So, that's, that's the equity piece that we're looking to change for ninth graders. We still want to recognize that there are students that are at that honors level, and that we really need to challenge them more than we have been. I'd beg to say that there's some students in the honors biology classes right now that could be challenged more than they are now. I'd beg to say that there are students in the regular biology class that at times would enjoy seeing some of the rigor and additional symposiums or activities that an honors student would do.
So, if we no longer have an honors biology, to what avenue are we challenging a ninth grader more who is interested in that or can handle the challenge in something like, in, well, specifically biology? If we have eliminated the honors biology, which is, which was the idea of that course?
Well, I think what he's saying is that there's no way for us to measure whether or not they're actually being challenged more. A lab was an example of they're not being challenged more, but they're getting honors credit.
So, I'm saying, why don't we fix the course as opposed to eliminate it?
Well, they may determine that that is an option down the line, but as it stands right now, there is no differentiator. And they're still refining it, so it could come back if they find a way to enhance it as an honors course, but right now, they haven't had that.
I understood all that, but that was my whole, that was the whole baseline of my question, is why drop the course instead of truly establish it as, or do what you need to do to be satisfied that it's an honors course?
Because it, the coursework doesn't have to be a standalone and say that these are the only students that can take this, because they, on this test, passed it at this level, and they had a parent who signed them up for it. That's inequitable for our students, especially when we don't know them. We have a fair amount of students who come to us from a parochial school that perhaps weren't here in our eighth-grade class to take that test.
Sure.
And so, by default, they're put into a regular class unless their parent identifies them and says, "Well, my child needs to be in an honors class."
So, would?
So, it, there's inequity in how we put students in a monickered class like that, versus, once we learn and understand who our students are, we can now provide those honors-level activities for our students and really challenge them when we understand who we've got in front of us.
But weren't you proposing an honors or AP stuff and some other subjects?
Yep, adding AP courses, so we would add the AP human geography at the ninth-grade level, but grade level, uh, but again, that's, that's a AP-level course that, uh, the curriculum's said to us as being at that higher level than, uh, regular global studies class.
So then it still comes down to whether a parent signs their-
Sure.
-freshman up for that, just like it would, uh, an honors, are there any-
Yep, but, but the-
-any other honors class?
If Andrew was still here, he'd, he'd explain to you that those students would all still be learning together.
Sure.
There would be opportunities and things that the students who are expected to do the AP class would do above and beyond and additional to the other students. So you, you, you have a student at the ninth grade level that, you know, after September, you know, could identify themselves as, "Yeah, I, I wanna be challenged, I want that rigor", and could take the AP class, the AP test, you know, come March.
But there is no avenue to, for a ninth grader to do that in science?
The, the honors program would be that avenue.
Okay, so they're in the program, but there's no class they could take in the sciences in ninth grade that-
They, they all take biology as it is, and so the honors piece would be, so for example, during that Falcon time, we bring in the, the speaker from Medical College of Wisconsin, and they're expected to attend that speaker and they're expected to-
Sure.
-have, have a conversation with their biology teacher on the notes that they took from that. That, that'd be an above and beyond expectation, uh, that an honor student would have to do that demonstrates that rigor and that, uh, depth of understanding in whatever that topic is, uh, versus a, a student who doesn't want that honors moniker would, would not attend that symposium, or if they wanted to attend it, they could attend it, but they wouldn't have some of the, the assignment requirements tied to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Am I on for the next one too, or is that?
Me, okay, put on.
Is that calendar?
Calendar.
Okay, you can handle it.
I'd value to run from that one.
Okay, uh, item H is a twenty eighteen nineteen calendar.
So in the, uh, in the board packet, you have a draft calendar, you have some highlights of what you see on this calendar as compared to others, um, so just wanted to share with you a couple of updates, um, I believe I mentioned to you, um, that we shared this calendar out, there are building leaders throughout the district that cover grade bands, um, three or four per building, uh, high schools and maybe a couple more, and just asked them to gather feedback from all teachers on this calendar, questions that they had. Um, and I would say we've gotten a, a wide range of feedback, I'm still waiting for a couple of them to give it to me, but, um, I'll be honest with you, some of it is very adult-centered, um, some of it, and so our lens in creating this calendar had, uh, very family students in the front of it in terms of what makes sense for our families, where we put some breaks. It's also been very intentional, as the board remembers last spring, um, when I gave you the results in May of the, the, the regional, uh, survey results around spring, we gave a staff survey and we gave a parent one, all the forty-one districts in CISA One gave that same spring break survey. We've been meeting regularly, last Friday, I was hoping she would give it to me electronically, but, um, we continue to meet, um, we have a survey of where all of the, um, CISA One districts are in eighteen ninety having their spring break and where they plan to for nineteen twenty. A couple of districts are still in that cycle where they're planning their calendar out a year, so they already had their eighteen nineteen spring break calendar done, but their plans are to move it, you know, consistently. So I can tell you there is a large movement in trying to find a consistent, um, week. Um, so when you see collaborative professional development days, we are working very closely with Greenfield, Greendale and Franklin. Greendale approved their calendar last Monday night, they have the last week in March, the same week that we're proposing, they also have that Friday, um, Good Friday off, and all of their students and staff are back in that Monday. Um, our parents and families get off that Monday, so they still have a four-day weekend, uh, we are asking our staff to come back for PD day. Franklin has the exact same schedule in terms of that as Greendale, they have the same last week in March, Frank, uh, Franklin will have their, um, teachers come back on that Monday after, and students come back that Monday after Easter. Um, so what's unique about next year's calendar is that there is no September first before Labor Day, so that pushes things out. There's also an extra day, um, in the holiday break because the New Year's Day falls a day later, so we lose two school days if you were there. If you look in June, we go on Monday, Tuesday into the next week. Um, we did build in what we're, what we're piloting this year called floating PD days. Um, so we're allowing our teachers right now, um, we're going to be piloting, they don't know it yet, so, um, but that half day before, um, Thanksgiving this year, teachers, we gave some evening PD options and they could take advantage of those, so then they could leave at noon on the Thanksgiving, before Thanksgiving this year, um, they, or if they didn't, those didn't work in the schedule, they could still be here that half day on Thanksgiving before-
PD.
PD, professional development.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, so what we're looking at is we have another day coming up this spring, that if, if we create a menu of options for them after school in the evening where they could collect, um, which we're district priorities in terms of professional development, if they have all of those, um, completed, that that day would be a day off for them. We think that that's, some districts do that in terms of providing some flexibility. If they don't wanna do after-school or evening, then that day is on the calendar for them to come here and do that. So we think that it provides our building principals some opportunity to personalize what their building needs might need for PD, so it can be two hours, you know, on Thursdays for a month or whatever it is. We're proposing that, so when you see the word floating PD day, it means that it's a scheduled half day for teachers, but if you've done some professional development outside of the school day that we've offered, you don't have to report that day. We think that that's a plus. Interestingly enough, that hasn't been the, um, take for some teachers, they're, and we think maybe they just don't understand it, we're not quite clear. Um, so next year's calendar, you will see, um, the total number of days is a hundred and ninety-one, as is the case this year, as is the case last year. The only difference is we actually have one more student day and one less PD day, so we go from fourteen to thirteen, and we go from student days to one seventy-seven to one seventy-eight. Total days contracted are actually a hundred and ninety-four, we pay teachers for three holidays, so they actually are contracted for a hundred and ninety-one days. Um, correct, but paid for actual workdays of a hundred and ninety-one. So, um, next year, um, the, where the spring break falls, when we look at the nineteen-twenty calendar, we do know that anytime we said if, if for some reason Easter falls the first week of April, we would then consider having the spring break there. We know that the later we wait for, um, spring break, teachers and students get very antsy when you're having it the last week of April. We also hit testing windows, we get close to when AP exams and the state testing window is, um, and so, so, um, our districts have committed, our group of four have committed to having that consistent week, either the end of April, or excuse me, the end of March, unless spring break falls that way. Um, Greendale is unique a little bit, um, this year's calendar and West Dallas, they have a board policy that, um, when, because elections are held in their district, that they don't have students report to school on those days. It's a safety concern or that, that's what their board has believed, and so that, um, it, it falls fine, so when we're, we've been working with Greendale on that, next year it's not an issue of where it is, but for example, this year when they come back, um, they're actually coming back two days later because they don't have students in there just because of the voting thing. West Dallas is very similar too. So, um, the, the report that I just got on Friday was what districts are doing for eighteen nineteen. Waukesha County, interestingly enough, has the majority of all of their districts going with the last week in March. So there are still some that are in April, MPS is sort of their own thing, they're trying to get all their own schools on the same calendar because now they did that thing this last year where they started the first week of August, so their goal is to try to just get everybody on their school week. So I will share this out, I was hoping she sent, would send it out electronically, but in terms of, um, where the other districts are in southeastern Wisconsin and what their plans are for nineteen-twenty. So, um, you know, we know that that might not be in the lens of where teachers are thinking, but it was absolutely critical for us that we can do some collaborative professional development with our other districts and bringing in speakers, bringing some of our staff and sharing them together. So, um, you know, we, we did solicit that feedback, we're going to be sharing with them the rationale why some of those days are what they are, um, because of course, you know, there were requests for more days off and, and less days. We heard that prior, I don't know, prior to my coming, that there was only a hundred and ninety days at some point, I think Kathy looked that up in fourteen fifty and they were wondering if they were going to get compensated for an extra day. So those questions like that we're dealing, you know, we're going to be responding to. I do wanna point out the beginning of, um, August a little bit and why we did what we did there. We have heard from teachers in the past that, um, for example, this year, when they do four straight days of professional development, they come back off from summer break, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and have kids on Friday, there is not a lot of breathing room, they're trying to get ready for their classroom and students coming. And we also find some things in terms of, "We didn't do that, we're still finalizing bus transportation, all of this stuff, students come, or teachers come back and we realize that some things could get some attention to." So, um, because we can't start up until after Labor Day this next year because of where September one falls, we've actually taken the four days of professional development and put a week in between there, so there's a little bit of breathing room in there, and, um, it gives people the opportunity, um, and it's our staff, students can't start to take a long, um, Labor Day weekend if they're heading up north instead of having PD right up to that. A lot of districts are not, are doing that with their professional development time in August, they're having that thirty-first off. What I do wanna bring your attention to is August twenty-ninth, and it's a unique thing that we would like to do. So in the past, we have typically, uh, the last couple of years, we've had our sixth graders come in only by themselves for a day and not our seventh and eighth graders. We've had our freshmen come in for a half day alone, and we've transitioned our K-four and K-five students becoming every other day. So those are what we call our transition points, we're calling this a transition day. We're gonna run it through summer school because we can't officially start our school, but we're going to encourage all of those students to come at those grade levels so that anxiety of transitioning to a new school, they can take care of before Labor Day, um, and we can do all of that programming that we need to, that transition, so when it rolls around to Tuesday, September fourth after the long weekend, every grade at every class can start with a full-day school so they know what their complete routine looks like. When a whole school does not show up, so for example, this year at the middle school, when only sixth graders show up, we can't count that as instructional minutes. You can only count instructional minutes when an entire school is supposed to be reporting. So schools that used to do testing and they only had their tenth graders or their whatever graders, you can't count that as a full day of instructional minutes. So this allows us to, um, to sort of allow those transition days for that anxiety that students might be having before the long Labor Day weekend, sort of get acclimated to their school building the same way we've been doing it, um, and that's sort of a workaround by doing it. We can count it for summer school, we just can't call it the official first day of school. So that's, that's that unique piece of it that we're, um, trying to take care of with transitioning to schools. And so the principals have also some other creative ideas of what to do potentially on that day, um, in terms of what that looks like, so.
How does the attendance requirement work on a day like that?
It would be run through summer school, so it would be optional in terms of that. Districts who've done it as a transition day and let their parents know, and their parents want their child to be there-
Sure.
It's usually, districts who've done it have been like at eighty-five or ninety percent because of that.
Yeah.
So if, when the calendar passes, we would communicate that out right away to parents like, "Hey, officially the school doesn't start here, but we're creating this day for the benefit of your child, so we can, you know, get used to their building, they can get their devices, they can walk through their lockers, they can get all of that before that Labor Day." So we would, we would have to spend some time messaging that and communicating that specifically.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the calendar? Okay. Thank you. So, uh, now I will take a motion to adjourn a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one, see to discuss retirement of a staff member.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call Nancy.
Hi.
Quinn. Stephanie.
Hi.
Jonathan, I.
Kevin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you all for staying. Have a good night.